Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the October 23rd meeting of the Charles County Board of Education. Can we please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. First thing on the agenda is a presentation on student transfer. Dr. Jones and Company.
Good afternoon.
All right, so this afternoon, I am charged to chat with you a little bit about our school system's transfer policy and rule as it relates to students attending a school that's outside of the one they are assigned to. So, as you know, Rule Number, I'm sorry, Policy Number 5126 is the governing policy around students attending school within the zone in which they reside. And so, this is really just what you see here is the actual policy. And then, some information here, the policy and the rule are pretty extensive as you review it. So, Policy 5126, and then Rule 5126, and 5126.1, 5126.2. Pretty extensive, and so I'll give you the highlights today. The things that I think that you and the public will be most interested in just sort of hearing and re-familiarizing yourselves with regarding the policy. And so, here, the Board of Education, Charles County Council, requires students to attend the school which they are assigned. And then, if a student or family would like to request transfer to another school that again is not in the one which the student resides, then they do have to meet certain qualifications or conditions of Policy 5126, so it's always in Rule 5126. And or both. Underneath, some statements here that can be found in the rule as well that we thought would make sense to point out today, be important to point out. The student's zone school is based with the student's domicile. So, you may have heard me use the word reside. So, we do sort of take that word, we sort of moved the word reside to domicile, changed that to domicile for the parent, and then for definition of what domicile is. We have defined it as individual sole permanent home without present intention of change, and not withstanding the existence of homes or residences elsewhere. And then, for the sake of the rest of this presentation, the last parts is what we're going to talk about. Custodial, parent guardians, a parent guardians may request to transfer their child to a school other than the one to which they are assigned to according to the rule if there is a reason that a parent wants to ask for a change of schools. So, the process for when parents have reached this decision. Parents and guardians must complete a school change of request form and submit it to the Office of Student Services. And students must, until the decision is made, students must remain in their zone school, their assigned school. A decision for this request can take up to 10 workdays. The decision letters are mailed out and sent by email. Decisions are, if a parent is not in agreement with a decision that has been rendered from the Office of Student Services, the parents may appeal that decision. And that decision, that appeal would come to the Office of School Administration and Leadership. So, the appeal process, and that's not stated here, but the appeal process is outlined in the letter. So, the letter, the decision letter that parents would get from the Office of Student Services would tell them exactly how to appeal their decision if they were not pleased with it. And so, when the appeals do, if you don't mind going back one quick, Mr. Allen. When the appeals do come to my office, or if the Office of School Administration upholds the Student Services decision. Heard my voice change a little bit. Think I'm backing away from the microphone? All right, so when those appeals are made to our office, if we uphold Student Services' decision, so this, obviously this means that Student Services denied their request. And so, when they appeal to our office, if we uphold their denial, then the parents do have the opportunity to appeal to your level, to the board level. So, it would leave from my office to you if the parents wanted to go to the next step if they were not pleased with the decision they received out of our office. And so, when considering these decisions, the appeals, these are some of the things that may be considered if we were really, you know, considering families' appeals. And so, these, this is not an exhaustive list, but these are the big ones. Again, the rule itself can be researched, and you could find more details there, but some that we thought are the more popular ones, if you will, to highlight here today. Domicile changes after the start of the second semester to finish the school year. So, these are reasons that we would consider approving such, an appeal that came our way. Domicile changes during the student's senior year to remain at that, at that school that they are enrolled in. If, for example, a senior's family moves and they move out of the zone, they are a senior, we tend to consider those favorably thinking about the senior who is about to graduate. Parents or guardians have entered into a contract to purchase a home before the end of the first quarter. So, this is our prospective home buyers clause that you can read about in there. We typically give favorable consideration if there is such a document there that we receive an academic course of study that is not offered within the student-zoned school. Reason that we do consider. Unusual hardships, which are considered on a case-by-case basis. That's probably the one that we receive the most appeals. And sometimes, families are not pleased with the responses received because that, again, considered on a case-by-case basis, there are no guarantees. And while the hardship cases we review, we acknowledge that they are legitimately hardship cases for those particular families. But we do look at them in the grand scheme of things. There are times where they may not be as, I don't want to say hard, but they may not be as uncommon as what people may think. Daycare issues, for example. Parent or guardian is a full-time CCPS employee. The requested school must be in the zone of the employee's work location. So, our employees who work for us, the school that they would like their child to attend, it must be within the zone of the place that they, the school that they work, for example. And then, for in-county employees, there is no tuition that we charge. For out-of-county employees, there is a reduced tuition, which may be waived if that employee was brought on before January the 1st, 2013. And an approved child, child of a CCPS employee is eligible for athletics and extracurricular activities immediately. If it is a non-CCPS employee's child, if they are approved, they are not eligible for one calendar year from the date of enrollment. So, just some of the guidelines there that we consider approving appeals. Some of the conditions, we thought we'd point some of these out. The receiving school, so just, you know, some of the conditions, and then just a footnote under each here. The receiving school, if the student is approved, the school must have enrollment space. Enrollment should not negatively affect any specific grade or program of studies if we will, if we are going to approve it. As far as the academic course of studies, it may be approved if the course of study is not offered within that zone school, but that does not include JROTC and world languages and other courses offered at each school with a different academic focus. So, everyone knows that we do have, for example, JROTC at each of our schools, but it's a different military branch, but it is offered at each school. Hardships, again, are considered on a case-by-case basis. Exceptions, and I think I mentioned this a moment ago, exceptions are not granted for common circumstances affecting many students, such as sibling enrollment, or redistricting, or daycare issues. And then, lastly, transportation. The last condition that we noted here for consideration, if the student is approved, if the appeal is approved, the student is not eligible for transportation. Parents do have to transport their own children to, to and from school. And when they receive their decision letter that gives them the approval conditions, all of this is spelled out. That, you know, the transportation is not available, that you do have to transport your child to and from school, and so on. Enrollment space, if there's a denial from the Student Services' office, it will tell the family that, you know, the reason for the denial. Sometimes it is, oftentimes it is because of enrollment. You know, the space at our schools, the space at our schools is absolutely for the schools, students who live in that zone. And many of our schools are over the state-grade capacity, so sometimes that comes into play. We will get the question sometimes from families, well, what, you know, if you're telling me that it's over enrolled, what if I moved into that zone? Well, if you moved into that zone, then you have a right to attend that school. So, that just is what it is. If you don't live in that zone, then we certainly are going to take a look at whether or not we're going to approve that when the school's already overcrowded, so to speak, over the state-grade capacity. And then, yes, I'm sorry. So, then there is, when an approval is given, there is a right to rescind. So, the superintendent or designated, and the designated is typically the school principal, has the right to rescind the transfer for several reasons, but not limited to this list that's always noted in the letters that parents receive. Behavioral concerns, attendance issues, academic performance, and then fraud, including fraudulent document or proof of domicile. Believe it or not, we actually have that sometimes where families are, they're really wanting their student to be in this particular school. And so, sometimes, you know, folks will go the lengths of making things seem as though they're not, they are not. And so, so these are things that principals do have the right to rescind that offer. But I will say that when students are approved, we ask our principals, we advise our principals to work with students. And we don't expect students to be perfect, you know, whether they are attending school out of zone or not. So, the slightest behavior issue that comes up doesn't mean that principals are going to put them out and send them to their home school. Chronic kinds of, you know, I guess, more severe kinds of behavior concerns could be a reason that a principal does say that this is, this is not working out the way we had planned, and so you'll have to go back to your home school. Attendance issues, again, things that, that we're looking at as being chronic kinds of situations. Work with families as you normally would, is what we tell principals. But certainly, look at that. If that's an issue, then clearly the family's having troubles getting them to and from school, which was one of the conditions that they were approved on. And so, so just, again, a couple of the things there that, a couple of the reasons that principals would have to rescind an approval if it came down to it. And I think, and the last, I think this is the last slide here. We just wanted you to have an idea of what some of the numbers looked like as we went back and took of the last few years as far as the number of requests that are received, school transfer requests that are received. So, in 2020, 21, the first year up there, there were 344 requests received that year. 223 of them were approved, 121 of them were denied. And of those denials, 42 of them were appealed. And of those appeals that came to our office, 25 of them, our office upheld the decision that Student Services made. And then, 17 of them, we overturned. And as we look at them, I'll just tell you, in our office, we have a team of us that looks at each appeal that comes in. And we look very carefully at all of the documentation that was provided from the very beginning of the process when they first submitted a student, a school change request form, up through when we got the paperwork and everything that's in between. And so, we look at it very carefully, each one of them very carefully, and try to make decisions that are, that we believe are fair and the best. And so, 21, 22, there were 372 requests received, 187 of them were approved, 185 were denied, 64 were appealed of those, 64 of those denials were appealed. 37 of those appeals were upheld, and then 27 were overturned. And you can see the other years in 22, 23. So, last year, we had 403 that were received. And then, this year so far, up through October 10th, we had 288 requests that were received. So, the requests that we receive every year, it's not necessarily a calendar year because what happens is folks do begin in late spring, applying for, sometimes applying to go to school out of zone for the following year. Sometimes it's for that year they're in, sometimes it's for the following year. And so, so late spring, we'll, we'll get an uptick in the number of them that we receive. But in the end, we do receive them all throughout the year for various reasons. You know, sometimes people move and they don't tell us, and we find out about it later, and then we have to send them a letter and say, okay, we know you're not living there anymore. You're going to have to go to where your, the school you live. And then, they'll put in a request. Other times, they, you know, families have had a problem at the school that their child is attending, or multiple problems. It could be related to some sort of behavior or bullying type of things. There are all kinds of reasons that people ask to go to a school outside of their zone. But nonetheless, the numbers have kind of crept up, as you can see, the last few years. 344, 372, 403. And right now, we're at 288. And so, so they're just going up, and we take them when they come. They always go through Student Services first, and then when they are appealed, they come to our office. And then, the last, just footnote there, there have been, up to this point, since 2021, more than 1,400 forms have been received and processed. And so, so it keeps us a little busy. And it's one of the things that keeps us busy in the Student Services' office. And then, certainly, when families are not happy with the response they've gotten, they'll come to our office, and we try to help resolve the issue. And I think that might be, yes, so.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jones.
Yes, indeed, thank you.
Any questions, comments from board members? Yeah, Ms. Kramer?
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Just one quick question. Do we have any data on, like, the most common reasons that requests, transfer requests are submitted? Like, maybe a top three, or something like that?
Yeah, I'm sure we could capture that data. I mean, we have all the records too. I don't, as far as in my office, we don't keep it separately. In the Student Services' office, I'm not 100% sure if they keep it separately. But again, they have all their documentation because they send us copies of it. So, we certainly could find that out, what would be the top reasons. Hard for me to say, because as you can see, a lot of them come to us, but not all of them. A lot of them just get processed there in Student Services. So, I could tell you, and you know, the ones in our office, probably the highest, the highest number of the ones that receive are where families have had some concern, some problem. And then, behind, behind that is probably where they have moved, and they, they didn't inform us that they had moved, and then we found out, you know, by mail coming back, or however the reason, we found out that they had moved. And so, we, we have to tell them that the child can't go there. So, then, unless you put in a school change request and have us, you know, consider it, and so then that happens. And so, but yeah, so that data, I don't have hard numbers, but if that's something that you'd be interested in us finding out, we certainly could.
I just feel like it might be helpful, particularly if we're going to be looking at the process. You know, I think it might be helpful to us to know, you know, what the majority of the requests are based on. So, maybe we can look at how we can, just how to look at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I think, remember serves me, and again, I know you don't get it at your level. I think the last time we looked at this, I think most of the requests actually came from employees of the system because they have that, that right under the negotiated contract to have their child go to the school where they work.
There are a lot.
But they still have to go through this process. But if you could get us that, that would be good. Ms. Smith, and then Ms. Morley.
Thank you, Dr. Jones, for the presentation. I think of the probably top five reasons that, you know, parents and families typically reach out to me, the transfer policy is definitely within the top three. So, taking a moment to kind of walk through what is the kind of decision process for the public is very important. Just wanted to say thank you. Just wanting to ensure that the public knows that for students who are part of the McKinney-Vento program, so homeless, neglected, and delinquent, those facing housing insecurity, they are not a part of this process. They are allowed to remain in their home school.
They, they are permitted to remain in their home schools, but we do ask them to fill out this paperwork. And there is our person who oversees McKinney-Vento, Bethany Goodwin. She is a coordinator over, I hate to mess up her title, but maybe students in certain programs, or whatever it might be. But she's a person that we consult with when it comes to students with McKinney-Vento because, yes, you're right, those students are, we treat them differently in that regard to be sure that we're doing right by them. But it does mean that these rules don't necessarily apply exactly as they do to everyone else.
Appreciate it. And I do support my colleague, Ms. Kramer, and Chairman Lucas in sort of looking at trend data.
Sure.
Just to get a sense of, are we truly doing right by the majority of the community with the policy we presently have? Or are there some additional considerations that the board should make in a future iteration of that policy? So, would appreciate that, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Morley?
Thank you, Dr. Jones. As, as mentioned, this was very helpful. A couple of questions. One, what typically happens after the, the transfer process? And my understanding is it's for that academic year, right? So, what happens after that year is that?
Great question, yes. So, so at the end of that year, the decision is reviewed. And so, and if there are no concerns regarding that student remaining in that building, then that student will remain in that building until they matriculate to the next level.
So, they don't have to reapply necessarily?
They don't have to reapply. So, there, there was a time, I think, when we might have had that in place, or that might have been a practice of ours. But I think by, by rule, they don't have to reapply, but it is reviewed at the end of the year to determine. And so, that's consulting with the administration and all of that.
And they take into account enrollment and behavior and all the, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. And when you mentioned about appeals being overturned, were you talking about at your level, when you, the aggregate number? Or is it including board level appeals?
So, no, so I think, go back a couple of slides if you don't mind, Ms. Allen. No, go, I'm sorry, the last, right there. So, no, so those ones that are overturned, so they were overturned in, in our office. But if you look under, I did put one set here on the 22, 23, bottom left. So, 53 were, appeals were upheld. So, they were upheld, in my office, we upheld Student Services' decision. And then, two of them, because they didn't, they really didn't like my decision, they appealed them to the board level, right? And then, but 12 of the appeals were overturned. So, I did not put what your decision was of those two. So, I didn't include that. But two of them did leave from my level to your level. But all the rest of them are just at, at my office's level. They were, yes, appealed.
And to piggyback a little bit on Ms. Kramer's question, and the answer is probably no, and not to put you on the spot, but I'm just curious if there's data, if there could be, on how students do after the transfer. You know, does it, you know, especially those that maybe, to your point, because of bullying or behavioral issues, if there is any change once they're at, at the new school? Or, you know, if there remain concerns after?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know that we have tracked that data per se. I mean, I'd have to ask some of my team because some of my folks may know better than I. I'm not sure because there, again, there's so many different reasons that we, you know, do allow transfers, and not all of them are related to something that went wrong, you know? And so.
That's a fair point.
So, so I'm not sure, but I can ask.
And one, oh. Just add that if it was a behavior issue, I think Dr. Jones mentioned that there's a way in which the permission to go to another school may be rescinded. Because we've had some cases where, because of behavior issues, we have rescinded some requests for changes. But, you know, and then, and then the yearly reviews of continuing within that great cluster of the school is something that I think gets done at a more school-level administrator and your executive directors to continue through.
Right, right, yeah, yes.
And one last question. Do you happen to know if, if there is a particular level where most of these occur? Is it elementary that you're seeing, like, the bulk of them, or most of them high school? Or is it pretty fairly scattered as far as, you know? Just curious.
Yes, it is kind of scattered. I'd say a lot of them are elementary. The ones at the high school level, sometimes are related to athletics, so sometimes that comes into play. But, but yeah, I don't know, I'd have to look at the data. We see them across the board, there's so many that we get. Sometimes I'm reading the, you know, the remarks there and barely paying attention to the grades and all of that. But certainly, that's, that's data we could easily.
I appreciate that, sir. And just, you know, just thinking about that as we consider the policy going forward. All right, thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you.
Ms. Bartlett-Washington?
Yes, thank you for the data. And I agree with Board Member Kramer and the rest of my colleagues about the data. I wanted us to really look at the, when a parent have one student that has been bullied in the school, in the same school, and you allow that child to leave, but the other sibling is sitting there. And just taking consideration of that parent who, you know, was having that issue at their school, and now in the back of their head, they're worrying about the other child. That's, you know, kind of stressful. So, I want us to look at this process as if, if we allow one child to move, and both of those children are in the same school, that it could be a possibility for that parent also to have, for, under that stress. Because they could say, no, I don't want my second child to move because they're doing excellent. But, you know, just giving that self-confidence with that parent to say, you know, you can actually move with your other syllable, syllable, syllabus. Sibling, I couldn't get it out there for a minute. But that could be something possible because, as, looking back as a parent, if I'm, one of my kids is going through bullying, and then the thought of my second child could go through, and I have to wait through this whole process again to even see if you're going to let them go, it would, it's just a lot of stress on a parent.
You mean siblings in the same school at the same time?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, absolutely, we, you know, we consider all of that. I can tell you that off the top of my head, we rarely have a situation where a parent's asking for one child to move and not asking for their sibling. Typically, when we get an appeal, they'll be asking for all of their children because they don't necessarily want them to be in different schools either, regardless of if just one of them had a problem or not. Typically, they'll ask for, for both. And then, sometimes a reason for the second one will be because I want them both to be together because the first one, we had an issue. It's rare, we ask, we have siblings where the parent doesn't ask for them both. But we consider everything that they, families submit. We submit, we consider it, read it thoroughly, very carefully. Do we do a lot of research and, before making a decision, you know, on everything we get for every child. But, but it's a rare occasion that we get one. I can't think of any off the top of my head, but, but I think it would be really rare if we get one where the sibling in that school and the family's not at. Typically, I mean, we'll get lots of them with, where three or four different ones, and, and they are all siblings in that building. And we consider every single one of them. But rarely do we get one where the sibling in that building that they didn't ask for.
All right, Ms. Moore?
Thank you for that presentation. I have about three questions relating to bullying. Is there a tiered approach to how you decide if a student should be transferred because they've been bullied? And what does that, you don't have to get into the weeds of what it looks like, but how do you just determine, you know, that bullying behavior is something that, you know, they need to be transferred for?
Absolutely. So, it is something that, when it does happen, what we look for is that it's documented as actual bullying at the school. And so, that entails the family having completed the bullying, harassment, intimidation paperwork at the school and allowed the administration there the opportunity to follow that process to identify and addressing it, which does involve at least a six-week period where, you know, they do initial investigation, and then whatever they decide, decisions they're going to make every two weeks. and then whatever they decide decisions they're going to make, every two weeks they have to check back in. And then if things are going well, fine. If things are not, they have to address it. And so there's a whole bullying, you know, process that's followed by the administration. But for us, when it comes down to that being a reason that the parents have asked for their child to go to a different school or appealed it to our level, we do look to see just what that looked like. Sometimes we will hear families tell us that my child was bullied, but we have no documentation that that was ever reported to the school. And so we, we look for that, whether it's formal or informal. I mean, we, we really need the formal. So do the paperwork, having let the school, given the school an opportunity to address it. But, but we, we read it and we research it either way. But that's, that's really the thing that we look for to determine whether or not, when it is bullying, we'll do some research then to see what efforts have been put into place to help, help stop that at the school, and whether or not they have been effective or not. So that all plays into the decision that, that, that we make regarding removing a student based on, on bullying. You know, is it something, you know, removing sometimes a student is disruptive. And so if we can help it, we want students to be in the school where they, they're zoned for. Typically, there's their neighborhood peers and all of that. I mean, we think that's best in most cases, but in some instances it's not, you know. But, so we want to exhaust our efforts to at least find out the best information, particularly when it comes to moving a student related to bullying.
Okay. A lot of my colleagues talked about the data. So are there any instances where you have data for the appeals that are not, that, well, that are upheld? Say, for instance, a bullying, you deemed it not transferable. Do you have any data to reflect the appeals that were upheld at all? Like the result, like after, it's like, no, you can't be transferred. Would that be reflected?
Yeah.
That's just with bullying. Would it be reflected in like suspension data, or, you know what I mean, like the outcome?
I, I, I got you. So, so what I can say is that when we deny or uphold a decision that the student services made, we are very aware when something else comes up with that child. So, so our offices works really closely with the principals. And so what will happen sometimes is families will apply for a school change request again. So they'll go through it, it'll get denied or what have you. And then maybe sometime will come, go by, and then something else will occur, and it'll come up again. They'll apply for it again. And we can look at that again and say, we got a bit of a trend, bit of a pattern here. So is there something to that? Is there a little more to, to, to what we, is there something we missed the last time around or what have you? We'll, we'll dig deeper into it if we receive repeat requests. But, but the, but the principals keep us in, in the loop on, because, you know, they get all the same documentation that we get when we, you know, let them know that this person is approved or not approved or what have you. So they, they are very aware of who these students are, and so they keep us informed on, on what's going on with those students. We've heard success stories where we kept students there, because, and I know that when we send it to families, we give them typically some guidance on what things can be put into place, on how they can help resolve some of the concerns that they've had. Meeting with the counselor, meeting with the grade-level administrator, you know, getting with the peer mediation group or mentor. I mean, we, we will spell these things out. Sometimes it's working with the aftercare programs in the neighborhood. So we'll give them a link to, give families a link to, to connect with aftercare, aftercare programs or what have you. So, so many different, depending on what the issue is, many different things where we give as suggestions to help, you know, this ma, things go smoothly if we're going to deny the request and, or uphold, I guess, the decision and send them back to their homeschool, the, the, the homeschool. Yeah, we, we'll try to set them up for success when they return.
Awesome. My last question. As far as it relates to students with special needs transferring, someone reached, a parent reached out to me about, well, her, actually, her kid was transitioning from elementary school to middle school. And I guess her home middle school didn't have the services that was needed, I guess, for, maybe a certain different programs at different schools. So I know that's kind of different when the kid, the kid is actually just leaving elementary, going to middle. But has there been any instances where parents with students with special needs needed to transfer, and what's the process with that?
Yeah. So, so, so they follow the same process as far as the paperwork goes. But with the services that they, you know, share with us that their child has or needs, and, and we will review the paperwork, the IEP as well, to determine if, because what we have for families is, what you said, is that the school that they're going to doesn't have the, the services or isn't able to provide the services that my child needs. So we do some research on that. Sometimes it turns out that families may not be as in the know, that the, what their child needs really is there and does exist. And so sometimes it's just a matter of connecting people to really kind of find out that, that your child's needs can be met in the homeschool, that the school that they're supposed to go to. And, and in some cases, we, we look very carefully at those. And if we think differently than what perhaps the IEP team thought or the school team thought, then we will, you know, do some in-house kind of consulting with each other, because sometimes it's a decision that should be made outside of us. Maybe it's the IEP team or committee that meets along with the central office folks that has a discussion, and maybe there's some decisions there that should be made outside of the school change request process. But students with special needs are looked at, you know, very closely to ensure that if whatever decision we're going to make, the student's needs can be met in the school that they're, they're going to be going to.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Hancock?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Jones. Let's have a quick question. I think you kind of touched on it a little bit answering Ms. Warren's question. One question that I have gotten a few times on this topic from citizens is usually around daycare. And it's predominant in areas of the county where there's a lot of elementary schools, and those elementary school boundaries are very close to where daycare providers may be pretty close to that family, but they're, they happen to be in another school district.
Yeah.
And I think I heard you, when you were answering Ms. Warren's question about trying to help, instead of just denying, which, I guess, for one, would you give consideration for, for daycare? And if not, well, could you explain again the steps that would be taken?
Sure. Yeah. So, so daycare is one of the ones that's specifically mentioned in the rule that we don't give consideration for as far as a reason to allow a, a school change. But like I was saying, we, we, we try very hard not to just, you know, say no. We, we try to give some, some options that can help families resolve their issues. So, so we, you know, look up different daycares in the areas, and we'll provide phone numbers, we'll provide email links. You know, we'll do what we can to, to, you know, push people in the right direction. Of course, alphabet at the elementary schools is something that we always plug. But, but we try very hard when we know we're giving an answer that families are not, you know, wanting, to be sure that we, you know, again, set them up for success and, you know, by pointing them in the right direction as much as what we can.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Jones. Appreciate it. Now, if I read he wasn't enough for you, more things to look at.
Chairperson Lucas, how are you today?
Good.
Vice Chair Morley, good to see you. Board members, Superintendent Dr. Navarro. Today, we're here to talk about how well we did on our state assessments, and to talk about our summer programming, what we offered, and whether it was successful or not. And before we, I turn it over, and I have helped me tonight, Mr. Roberts, he's Director of Accountability, Ms. Megan Hungerford, Director of Elementary Education, and Ms. Melissa Mize, who is Director of Secondary Education. At the end, we will discuss what we're doing to improve upon our scores, both in the, the state scores, but also when you look at how well our students are doing now in the I-readies after the summer learning. We have some work to do, and we recognize that and we acknowledge that. You will see we're making growth in our areas. And I just want to remind you before Mr. Roberts goes over our state assessments, that the state's, state assessments is kind of an endpoint, and it lets us know where our students are and whether they are on grade-level standard at the end of the year. And I think when we showed you the I-ready data during the year last year, what you saw is we have quite a few students that are actually are not at grade level, but they are improving. And they are either from two or three grade levels behind up to one grade level behind, but they're still behind. And so all of that work that our schools are doing to catch students up is not always reflected in the state assessments. But we are making progress. And I just want to remind folks that, you know, after COVID, we were in a big hole where many of our students were two or three grade levels behind, and it's going to take us some time to catch up. But we are making progress, and we'll continue to make progress. And I just want to remind folks before Mr. Roberts goes ahead and shows how well we did on this year, this past year's state data, and we did improve on the year before. So, Mr. Roberts.
Okay, so to, to begin, this is going to, this is the first slide that's going to show English Language Arts comparing the spring 2022 school year to the, the most recent spring 2023 results. So this chart's broken in for each different grade level, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, so on and so forth, all the way up to the 10th grade level. The Every Student Succeeds Act requires states to administer, to assess students in both math and English Language Arts in grades three through eight and at least once through, once in high school for each of those subjects. So this is the MCAP assessment that was first administered for the 22, 21, 22 school year, which is the first chart on the le, first bars on the left of each of those grade levels. And then also administered in the 22, 23 school year, which was just this past year. Previously, we administered the Park Administration, and that, the last time that was administered was the 18, 19 school year. So when you look at this, each of the students are, are going to fall into one of four categories. They're going to be either Level 1, 2, 3, or 4, which is Level 1 and 2, 1 is beginning learners, Level 2 is developing learners, Level 3 is proficient learners, and Level 4 is distinguished learners. In order to be considered proficient, a student has to be, earn either a 3 or a 4 on the assessment. So the, the orange bars across here are students that are proficient learners, who, what percentage of students in each of those years were proficient learners or earned a score of 3 or 4 on the assessment. And then the students in blue, the percentages in the blue are the students who were not proficient, which were the beginning learners and developing learners. So you can see in across, in each of these different grade levels, where we were from the 22, 21, 22 school year in comparison to 22, 23 school year. So you can see across that we've had gains in five of the different grade levels from where we were in terms of the orange, the percent of students who were proficient. So we've, we've made some, we've made some gains in proficiency. So again, this is English Language Arts. All right. So then what we also have done here is gone by grade level. We're missing a slide here. Okay, here we go. All right, here's the mathematics one. So this is grades, third grade through eighth grade, very similar setup, same, same scoring for proficiency levels. So showing gains from where we were in 22 versus where we were in the spring of 23. So again, we're seeing gains, proficiency level gains in five of our grade levels across, across schools. So you'll see that in the eighth grade math, there is a 5% and 95% with an asterisk. Anytime there is a percentage that is less than 5% or more than 95%, the state requires us to suppress that data. So it's suppressed at the state level and all the way across. So when we see that eight, Algebra 1 score here, this is Algebra 1 for any students that actually took it at the middle school level or at the high school level. So that 14.1% are students that took Algebra 1 in 2023, whether they took it while they were in middle school or they were at the high school level. The Algebra 2 scores, for the most part, are students that, remember that, when I had said in the, the ESSA requirement was that we had to test students in math and in English Language Arts at least once in high school. So most of those students in the Algebra 2 category are students that took Algebra 1 at the eighth grade level and needed a high school mathematics assessment in order to, to meet federal standards. So that number is the number of students, or the percentage of students that passed it, or were proficient at the Algebra 2 level. Okay, then what we've also done is, here we go, is we've done a breakdown for each school. Now, what this is, this is the elementary level, and something new that the state provided for us this year was a combination of all grades three through, third through fifth. So we've put all of those grades together in terms of English Language Arts proficiency level for each different school. So we didn't have that for previous years. It's a new category that they have for us. So we're able to show where the first bar there is CCPS, grades three through fifth, and then each of the different elementary schools. And then similarly, at the middle school level, we are able to show sixth through eighth grade for CCPS, and then each of the, each of the middle schools and what their percentage was for each of the different categories, proficient or not proficient. And at the high school level, the English Language Arts test that's administered is the English 10 assessment. So the first bar is CCPS grade 10, and then each of the different high schools and their percentages. And similarly for mathematics, again, elementary level, third through fifth combined, and then each of the different elementary schools. Now for mathematics, this middle school grades six through eight includes all, all math grades six through eight, which also includes the Algebra 1 students. But we also separated those out, so you'll see the Algebra 1 students as a breakdown for just the middle schools and at the high school level, so you can see the difference between those groups as well. So this slide includes all, all, all math at the middle school level, including Algebra 1. This is specifically the students who took Algebra 1, whether they took it in seventh grade or eighth grade, and how they, how they performed. And that's the CCPS Algebra 1 middle school, first one.
What percentage, just for information, of the students took Algebra 1 in middle school versus what percentage took it in high school?
Roughly 30, 36, 35% of students at middle school level, roughly 65% at the high school level. So then, what you could see here is at the high school level, again, using those data suppression rules, we have each of our high schools and the average at the high school level for CCPS is 5% proficient or less than 5% proficient, and then, or more than 95% not proficient at the high school level. We have some work to do there.
So as you can see, we do have some work to do, and we're going to talk a little bit at the end of this session about the summer boost, about the work that we're doing to keep moving our students forward. So I want to talk a little bit about the summer boost program. So the summer boost program is really looking at students that need extra help and extra support with reading and math. It's focused on those two areas, but based on some data that we collected from previous summers from families and from students, we've added some other SEL work going on in, in buildings, and we provided that. And we also added some of our elective courses, and we had some elective teachers go out and work with our students to break up the day and only, not only have them just focus in on math and reading, even though that was a primary purpose, but also give the students a little time during the day to do other things. So at this time, I'm going to have Ms. Hungerford talk a little bit about what the summer boost elementary day looks like, and then Ms. Mize will talk about the secondary summer boost.
Okay. Good, good afternoon. So it says that students were identified using fall and spring I-ready. We also used winter. I apologize for that. We looked across the board, and we identified students who had needs in, for elementary reading, our phonological awareness, and explicit phonics instruction, which are our foundational skills for our early learners and those in the upper grades who might still be facing challenges, also reading comprehension and writing. Within those programs, we also had targeted intervention, and that includes HEGERTY and foundations, which are phonemic awareness and phonics interventions, and leveled literacy intervention, which focuses more on comprehension. For elementary math, we identified the focus domains based on our grade level data. So if we looked across the board at grade three and saw. So, if we looked across the board at grade three and saw that our students were really not achieving as well in geometry, or in fractions, or in multiplication, those were the focus domains for the instruction. We kept our, our approach to use conceptual and computational mastery, and so we wanted to make sure that those both still remained, and we had a targeted intervention called Do the Math that was infused into the program.
So, at the middle school level, our focus for language arts, and again, students were identified using their iReady scores from that year. So, for language arts, we focused really on argumentative writing, vocabulary, and we did embed those SEL strategies as we did the summer prior. We also focused on targeted reading intervention, so students who receive an intervention during the school year, who were invited and attended summer boosts, received that same intervention. So, there was no delay, no gap, they were continuing on the path that they were on, where they left off at the end of the school year. So, Wilson and Just Words were some of the interventions, as well as leveled literacy intervention. Our teachers refer to that as LLI. In middle school math, we focused on computational fluency. That is really an area that we identified as a need for our students. Problem-solving strategies, of course, and then reasoning and modeling tasks. That is a huge focus for this school year, so we really wanted to work with students throughout the summer to make sure that they were ready for the upcoming school year, because that is something we're focusing on this year in middle school. And then our targeted math interventions are Number Worlds and My Path. My Path is an iReady intervention, so it is aligned directly with iReady. It identifies areas where students need to have additional support or additional work, and then it sets them off on like an individualized learning path.
So, as you can see with our numbers from this past summer, we had quite a few more students this summer than we've had in the previous two summers. This past summer, we had 2,350 students that we served compared to the year before is 1,000, or 1,700 students approximately, and the year before that was 1,600. One of the reasons why we had so many more students this summer was we looked at our, our data from the previous school year, and what we saw was, in 2022, we looked at students that were two or more grade levels behind. But when we looked at our data, with our iReady data during the school year last year, what we noticed was a student that came in behind tended to remain behind on overall average-wise. And so, we looked at one grade level below for this past summer, and we included those students. So, all students that were one grade or more below were invited to participate in summer boosts this past summer. I will say our attendance was really great for the first three weeks, just like in years prior, but it tends to tail off those last two weeks. Students and families, I think, are ready to go on vacation, and we start to see that happen. So, we are now looking at, for this coming summer, modifying our summer boost program to really look at the trends over the last couple of summers and make sure that we get our bang for the buck going forward. So, I will be coming to the board later in the year to talk about what summer boosts will look like for this coming summer. So, this lets us know whether summer boosts was, was worth it for our students and whether the attending in the summer actually helps. And so, what we do is we look at our iReady scores in the fall, and we compare them to how they ended up in this, the prior school year. So, the spring iReady scores to the fall iReady scores, to see whether there's been a huge drop, because there is some such, something called summer slide, it's real. Many students that don't do something academic over the summer tend to fall behind and fall farther behind when they start the, the next school year. And so, the numbers represent the scores between the spring iReady and then how they started off in the fall iReady. And what you'll see is that the negative is that they did lose some ground, and the positive is actually they gained some ground. And what you'll look at is the first column is the boost students, the students that participated in our summer boost this, this summer. The next one is no boost, those are students that did not participate in our boost program, and that includes all the students that did not participate in summer boosts. So, even the students that were at grade level or above grade level that were not invited because they weren't one or more grade levels behind, that includes all of those students. And then the third column is the national. And so, based on iReady's data, what they've looked at with all of the iReadies that they give nationally is, you'll see the typical summer slide is that national one. So, for example, for the, for, for second grade, so our students fell behind by one, but the students that did not go to boost fell behind by three, and then nationally, students typically fell behind by five. So, as you can see, that our students that did participate in boosts, it actually had a positive impact overall when you look at whether the program worked or didn't work. And you'll see that in most cases, the students that attended boosts did get a leg up and were able to start the year off, and didn't go with the national summer slide, or even the students that didn't participate in summer boosts. So, we're very happy with the way the program ended up and the data that we got. And so, I just also wanna say with the boost students, it's the students that attended at any time during the summer, and we did have some students that, you know, it may be attended the first week, but didn't attend the next four weeks. And so, it does include all students that attended in the boost program.
So, here we have summer school data. So, you can see in the green area, those three columns, that's referring to middle school, summer school students, and the, the orange is high school, and then the blue is students who took original credit courses. So, those are all high school students. You'll see in the trend from year to year, starting in 2021. I think it's important to note that in the summer of 2021, our summer school program was virtual. Starting in 21, 22, we came back to in-person, so that would be the past, this past summer, as well as the summer before. Our original credit courses are virtual, they've remained virtual. These are typically students who are selecting to take these courses, are students who want to free up some space in their schedule because they have other interests. There's some program that they're involved in, and they need to, to take a credit over the summer. Our pass rate, as you can see, for original credit is very high, 97% last summer, 95% this summer. And you'll notice, I think, too, in, in the high school columns, as we go from virtual to in, back to in-person, we have much more success working with students in person than we did virtually during that summer school summer, that virtual summer.
For the original credit, one of the reasons why we might have gone down for the prior summer is that we are offering more original credit during the school year for kids to take advantage of that as well.
And we've seen an increase in the numbers.
That are actually taking, yeah. So, now, what happens with the data? At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Hungerford. She'll talk about what we're doing right now this school year to help keep, get our kids moving forward and catching them up, and moving them ahead.
So, the purpose of gathering this data is not just to inform the public. It has two primary purposes. One, to inform our parents and families of how their student is progressing, and two, to inform us, so that we can make any adjustments we need to at the system, at the grade level, at the school, and even drill down to at the student level when we get to helping the schools. So, our, our folk eye this year, and it's continuing, is primarily tier-one instruction. And you may have heard me say before that our philosophy is strengthen the core. Last year, when we presented on tutoring, Kim Hudler, our elementary content specialist for reading, said that her job was to put the ELO tutoring people out of business, because, you know, we need to strengthen our core. So, we are focusing on that with whole group instruction, small group instruction, when data indicates that small groups need help, and we do small group instruction for all students in reading and math. So, at the class level, a teacher looks across the board and says, what domains, what indicators are our students doing well in? Where do they need a little more help? Where do I need to strengthen the instruction specifically? And then with small group instruction, as we've reported before, we have small group for students that need some intervention or remediation, and we also have that for students who just need a little recursive practice and reinforcement. And then we have small group instruction for those students who are succeeding, and we can enrich and accelerate their progress. We can offer individual support through our online platforms. Currently, elementary has My Math, My Path to Reading, and Dreambox for Math, and teachers have the ability to drill down in iReady data and take a look and say, Megan is really struggling with multi-digit addition, and assign lessons just on that to really focus on those skills and standards. We have in-school interventions, and those are being provided by our reading and math interventionists. Our instructional leadership team members provide interventions. Our special educators, including teachers and instructional assistants, can provide interventions, and they can do that across the board to all students. If they're working with a group of students with IEPs, they can include students without also, as long as the student-teacher ratio stays low. And then we have a huge focus on our extended learning opportunities. Our schools are very creative. They infuse social-emotional learning in these to make students have a positive experience and not make it seem like an arduous additional task. They can do it before school or after school, based on teacher, student, parent schedules, and what's gonna work best for the, for everyone. Some schools even do Saturday programs. And our focus with those is, we are really trying to get schools to do more high-impact tutoring, and they have come along and are doing an amazing job. And when we talk about high-impact tutoring, that means we have a frequency of two to three times a week, we have a duration of at least 20 concurrent lessons, and it's very focused on a specific need. We are able to, and I really don't know how they're doing this, but the schools are doing an amazing job. They're getting daily tutors that are certified teachers. Many, many of these are our retired folks who don't necessarily wanna come back to teach full-time, although we'd like that, too. But they just wanna work two or three days a week. So, you know, the principals kind of, when anybody says they're retiring, they say, okay, well, I've got a gig for you next year, let's talk about it now. And then we also contract with FEV and Amplify platforms, which are virtual platforms that provide virtual tutoring, and those can be done during the day, during small group instruction, when the students aren't meeting with the teacher, or they can also be infused as before and after-school programs. And we have a lot of schools participating in all those models right now. And the data that we're seeing shows that, that it's meeting success.
I'd like to just thank the principals of the elementary level. They really are doing a great job this year of getting more and more of these programs up and running earlier, and many of our students are gonna be able to take advantage of these extra programs.
So, at the secondary level, we do a lot of the same things. So, we're focusing on that tier-one instruction and really strengthening that core, making sure that teachers are really understanding their content standards, and that students, when they're assessing students, they're assessing to see whether or not they have gained mastery of that standard. When we do find that there are students who didn't understand a particular concept, then teachers are pulling those small groups to do structured reteaching with them, reassessment, enrichment, depending on what their needs are. You don't see as much small group instruction at the secondary level as you do in elementary, for sure, but it's something that really does work with secondary students, of course, and, and we're working with teachers all the time to figure out ways to manage that in the classroom. We do have individual support going on through a few online platforms, and these are really focused on student need. So, My Path, again, we're using for math at the secondary level. We're looking at students' skill deficits, we're looking at where they need to, you know, strengthen, and, and then they're on that individualized My Path platform. My Path can also be used to excel, help accelerate students, depending on where they are. We are also using this year, for the first time, at a few select middle schools, an iReady teacher toolbox. This, again, is just another tool for teachers to use that really helps them drill down to look at student needs and then provide instruction in just that specific area, so isolating that skill. Same thing with the teacher tools for instruction. Now, the teacher tools for instruction are available to any teacher, so they can look at their entire class, they can look at what needs their students have, and then they can group students accordingly and provide direct instruction for that particular skill. In ELA, we use Common Lit and Common Lit-focused assessments and lessons, and those are, again, it's an online platform that's really focused on standards-based instruction. For in-school intervention, so a little bit deeper, we have the labs at the middle school level. So, this was a change last year, where we really took apart that 90-minute math and ELA block, and we looked at just doing a class for the core instruction, and then students who need intervention, or students who need enrichment, go into a lab course. So, those students are placed using a variety of assessment tools, right? So, we're not just looking at iReady, we're looking at how they did on MCAP, we're looking at classroom assessments, we're looking at the student as a whole, and really identifying if they could benefit from that lab or intervention. We do have our ILT members at the middle school level. They are teaching two periods a year, sorry, two periods a day this year, is what I meant to say, not two periods a year. So, they've really become our master teachers. So, what we're hoping schools will start doing with these master teachers is having their other staff come in and watch them, and really observe effective instruction and what that looks like. And then, of course, at the high school level, we still have the high school resource teachers. They're, again, they're also master teachers going in and assisting our new, our new folks. And then, of course, we have our special educators and our special ed IAs who are helping to provide that really specific, really targeted instruction and intervention. We also have extended learning opportunities going on at the secondary level. A lot of times in secondary land, this looks like recovery opportunities, so grade recovery. You didn't pass first quarter, what can we do to help you bring that grade up so that you have a fighting chance of passing that course for the year? So, we have grade recovery, and then credit recovery at the high school level at every school in our system, every secondary school. In addition to that, we have a number of schools that are running Saturday programs, and those are usually pretty all-encompassing. So, they have a student who was assigned a Saturday school for a disciplinary consequence. We have tutoring programs going on on Saturdays, but the student who's there for the disciplinary consequence might as well be a part of that tutoring opportunity because they're there anyways, and so they're kind of trying to grab as many students as possible. We're emphasizing the high, high dosage, high-impact tutoring. So, again, we're hoping for at least three sessions a week, 20 sessions total. More often than not, at the middle and high school level, it looks like two sessions a week, depending on when they can get those students in. Our secondary schools have some in-person certified tutors coming in. A lot of times, we see those tutors going into the Avid classrooms, but more so, they're using our FEV online tutors. And we're working with FEV, individual schools are customizing their programs. Some of them are offering that intensive intervention and tutoring during the school day, so they've been able to build it in either to the lab courses in middle school or during their activity period, or even some core classes at the high school level. So, folks have gotten really creative this year, so I'm really curious to see what the data looks like at the end of the year after students have participated in all these programs.
And while we're doing all those things to make sure students are getting the services they need, we're also focusing on strengthening our teachers' effectiveness and professional knowledge. So, we have a two-pronged approach at both levels. We are focusing, as I just said, on strengthening the core instruction, so all of our curriculum and programs are delivered with fidelity and integrity, and students, or teachers are staying on pace, because sometimes if we get really far behind, we have, we, we cause gaps further because we haven't gotten to units. So, our core programs, just to remind you, are Intereading for K-5 reading and literacy, Illustive Math for K-5 math, and Connect for Learning, which is a fully integrated pre-kindergarten program used system-wide. We provide these sessions at our county-wide in- We provide these sessions at our countywide in-service days. We also have embedded professional learning at the schools by the instructional leadership teams and by the professional learning ship teams, which is our system initiative this year on writing, but also transcends all the content areas. And we have teacher coaching. ILT members are trained coaches, and then we've also, through some of our grant opportunities, been able to contract coaches coming from these vendors who are professional coaches and are coming in. Just as an aside with that, the schools that we targeted were the schools that have the greatest number of less experienced teachers. So, three or less years, conditional, long-term subs, things like that. So, those individuals that might need a little more assistance than at a school that has a veteran staff. And we're also working with our teachers across the board to make them really understand, and again, this is our attempt to alleviate the need for students to have intervention by catching students' difficulties before they really become anything bigger. So, we want them to understand how children are learning, what's happening in their brain when that learning occurs. So, we are currently getting ready to finish our All Teachers Pre-K through 3 will have had letters training, as will your superintendent of schools.
Every Tuesday or Thursday night.
That is Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. It drives me crazy that the acronym is spelled incorrectly for the word "letters," but I have to get over it. And that is directly aligned to the science of reading, and that's very powerful. I went through letters a number of years ago, and it really, for somebody who is already a certified reading specialist, it gives you more information than that you thought you knew it all, and you did not. And then we also have an initiative that we're in our second or third year of implementing, and we're really trying to build this across the board, and it's called OGAAP, Ongoing Assessment Project, and this is a fabulous training. It teaches teachers the math trajectories and helps them see the progressions in math learning. So, if a child is having challenges in multi-digit addition, it might be something that they are missing or they have a misconception of two or three years back, and it helps teachers kind of dissect that, pull it apart, and say, "Okay, where is the misconception?" And once you fix that, that learning can just accelerate right on up. So, we are doing that right now. We've done many summer sessions that honestly were so well-attended. People signed up for one, and then they came back for the second and third because we offer it in additive, multiplicative, and fractional, those three strands. And we have Saturday sessions going on this year throughout the year where teachers come the first Saturday of every month, and you would think we wouldn't have a lot of takers, and we have many, many participants engaged in that. I am proud to say that in the state of Maryland, Charles County has the highest number of individuals who are trained OGAAP trainers. They're approved OGAAP trainers. They are a large number of our instructional resource teacher team at the elementary level. So, we have achieved the way to provide this without having to hire more costly contractors because we can build our capacity from within.
So, at the secondary level, again, we're using the Common Lit 360. That's the ELA curriculum and one of our most commonly-used resources. And then at the, for math, we're using Illustrious Math. So, we are now fully implemented with Illustrious Math in middle school. We've rolled it out for Algebra I and this year for Geometry. Next year, we're looking to go to Algebra II. So, speaking the same language to students from the time they start in school all the way up through high school, and they get ready for those really advanced levels of math. And we're hoping to see a huge change in our scores because of this as time goes on. In addition, we have our countywide professional learning sessions, in-service sessions. We're embedding professional learning at schools. And typically, your ILT teams at the middle school level and your PLTs are really taking on that embedded school-day professional learning. And then, as Megan mentioned, at the elementary level, we also have the content-embedded coaching going on at the middle school level of one of our high schools. So, we've really looked at and identified and targeted a school because they had the most number of uncertified teachers or new teachers. And we have this company paired up with those teachers, and they're walking the walk with them, co-teaching with them, planning with them, doing all those things during the school day to job-embedded. So, we are also just continuing to build capacity with our teachers. We have a number of new teachers, so we are leaning on our veteran teachers to be the models for those brand-new and young teachers. So, we're doing Illustrious Math training at all levels, sixth grade all the way up through geometry. Our math professional learning this year is really focused on modeling and reasoning. We talk about really dissecting where students have issues and misconceptions in math at the middle school level. It is that reasoning and modeling content area, concept. We're doing targeted professional learning across the system, as you know, but we're really looking to unpack standards. And so, our content specialists, when they work with our teachers in small groups, that's what their focus is on, making sure that they truly understand their content standard and that they're delivering instruction that is at the level of grade, that grade-level standard. And then, we are also going out with the I-Ready team to some schools and just our own teams to different schools to unpack and dive into their data, their I-Ready data, but also their MCAP data, so they can really understand what student needs are and how to move forward and what that means for their instruction.
So, this slide is more of a reminder for families that we did send home on October 10th an email explaining how they could access their children's I-Ready reports that were sent home. We did have an I-Ready night last week where we explained how you can get these reports and what the reports mean, and then we gave some resources to families to target a resource as to, they could look at the report and then determine with extra help and extra support so they could provide their sons and daughters and guardians at home. So, that will be on our website, so parents can access that again and get the resources and see what's out there to help support their children at home. At this time, we'd like to take questions.
Very informative. Thank you. Ms. Butler-Washington.
Yes, it was very informative. And I'm going to start off by saying, looking at the numbers, I was a little sad there for a minute. So, but the programs and all of the tools that you have for the children, that was enlightening because it says that we're going to get to the, you're going to close that gap that we need to close. And furthermore, I just want to say this for the public. There was already a gap before COVID. So, what happened was COVID widened that gap. So, we just got to work a little harder. So, all the programs that you have put forth are mind-boggling and it's great. And the only thing I would hope is that the teachers and the parents will have an agreement to identify the children that need the help, and they can come up with a game plan and stick with it. Because what it does, it closes the gap for that child. And if they can stick with it with a year, you can say you can see light at the end. And so, it will be great for the child because you only want to look for the student and say it's great for the student. You might not, can't go to a summer that year, but for my child, a summer, I can go without that summer long as he or she is putting in the work and I can see progress, and it's going to make it better. So, that's the only thing I would wish is that, you know, that contract between the parent and the teacher that they, you know, identify the child and make that happen for him. Because if we all do that at the end or graduation, we all be petting Dr. DeBaron on the back and say, "Job well done," because all the kids will have it up there. So, that's my thing. But great programs, and I love everything that you're doing. So, sad, but now I'm happy, so we can go forth from there. Thank you.
Ms. Warren.
One question. You mentioned unpacking standards. I was like, oh, yeah, so that's professional development that you're doing with the teachers?
Yes, so...
So, real quick question, I forget. Do you all use the, what is it, Understanding by Design Curriculum Framework by any chance?
We do, specifically with our special ed teachers.
Okay.
Yes.
So, how do you plan to, what kind of tools or, you know, frameworks do you use to help unpack the standards?
So, our focus this year, countywide, is really focusing on standards-based instruction. So, we're looking at specifically Writing Standard II, and we're walking teachers and teams of administrators and teachers from each school through what that looks like, how to increase students' ability to write, to inform, through Writing Standard II. And we start every session by unpacking that standard and using a process to really go through it.
We also purchased for schools, not necessarily for every teacher, but for reference at the schools, some text called Common Core Companions, which go through, and if you guys would like to see a sample copy, we can drop a sample off to Ms. Doublefield for you to review. But it literally goes through in the grade-level bands. It goes through every single standard in every single content area, and it goes through, and it really annotates and highlights. And it helps teachers understand what that standard means, what you can do to address it. And very importantly, it helps teachers understand, and we are also doing this through PLT, to understand what the progression is among the standards. So, if I teach third grade and my students come in, I need to fully understand where they're coming from, what they learned in second grade, or I'm going to do it over and assume they don't, what I need to have them master in third grade and what their goals are going to be in fourth grade, and how those build along the grade levels. Because at the end of, at the end of their school career, they are going to attain for college and career readiness an anchor standard that then is backmapped all the way down to Pre-K. And they take it a step at a time, and we help them to understand that.
Oh, that is excellent, and that's at both the secondary and you're talking about elementary as well, teachers.
Across the system.
Part of that work is actually looking at student work and getting a common understanding of, is the work that we're viewing at standard, and if not, what needs to happen to get there. And the other part is to get in and out of classrooms. So, we are in the process right now of taking teacher leadership teams around to different schools and getting in and out of classrooms and having that discussion, but also principals are in the process of going around together and getting in and out of classrooms and having that discussion too. So, it's not only actually teaching what the standard is, but actually having discussions based on student work and what observations are seen in classrooms.
Excellent. Just real quick, I have a question about the Algebra I and Algebra II. I heard you all mentioned something about eighth grade, and then there's like a little pause. What do they learn in ninth grade, ninth grade math?
It depends on whether or not a student took Algebra I in eighth grade or whether they're slated to take it in ninth grade. So, as Mr. Roberts said, we had about 30% of our students taking Algebra I in eighth grade. Those students are a little bit more accelerated. And, but the typical path is Algebra I in ninth grade. So, if students take it in eighth grade, then in ninth grade, they're taking Geometry. Then they go on to Algebra II, and they can access those higher levels of math. We're also offering Geometry now as an original credit option. So, students who may not have been accelerated in middle school, they're taking Algebra I as a ninth grader, but they're doing very well, they're very successful, and they want to move on and really get to those higher-level courses. They can take Geometry as original credit over the summer and then jump into Algebra II as a 10th grader.
Yeah, because looking at the data, it was a little scary. I'm like, well, what happened between? And I thought about Geometry. I was just wanting clarification. Between Algebra I and Algebra II, the disconnect, you know, just with the data, so I thought I'd ask, but thank you.
What you're going to see next year is we are going to have students taking actually the Geometry test because part of our plan for college and career readiness is for students that don't pass it in Algebra I, they will take it in Geometry.
Ms. Smith.
I wanted to say, of course, thank you for the presentation. I think this is very, just critical for the board to understand as well as for the public to understand, especially when we look at our budget and we try to figure out like what are the priorities of the school system? Where are we investing our time, our money, our technology, our people? And then what data sort of drives that? This is a presentation that really speaks to me in terms of what's driving that. And then, do we hit the mark? We invested in summer boosts. Did we hit the mark or not in certain areas? So, appreciate kind of the breakdown throughout. So, just a few questions, if the chairman will allow me some grace, because I have a few.
Before you start, Ms. Schwartz, are we?
Okay.
Okay. So, the first one was, you mentioned earlier in the presentation about suppressed data if they were sort of below 5% in a particular category. Can you just explain what suppressed data means, both for the county as well as for the state?
Yeah, the idea behind it is that because the numbers are so few, it would lend itself to being able to determine which students actually perform at that particular level. So, that's why they suppress data for certain subgroups or for certain achievement levels because they don't want to be able to identify students at one level or not.
Understood. Okay, the numbers are just so low, you'd be able to begin to identify.
5% or 95%, one direction or the other, or students in a subgroup of 10 or fewer.
On Slide four, there was a decline in Algebra I that I noted, and I was just curious if there were any, was it Slide four? There was an Algebra I decline. Was it Algebra II?
There was the increase in Algebra I, but there was a decline in Algebra II.
Okay. And I was just curious if we had any sort of data in looking at that? Like, what was the, I'm sorry, blanking on the word. Do we have like any root causes to understand why that may have happened?
Yeah, one concern, as Mr. Lowes indicated, was that students usually take a break year because they take their Algebra in ninth grade, then they take Algebra II in that 10th grade year. So, they have that year where they don't even assess in math at the state level. So, making that change to when students are in high school to meet that SSA standard, which is that they have to take a high school math, testing them in Geometry right out of their, into their ninth-grade year, we think may have an impact on how well they're going to do on that.
Okay. For Slides five through seven, really appreciated the breakdown by school. I'm just curious, kind of what is the support or even the expectation of principals and building leaders to be able to communicate this information back to families to help them understand, kind of within our specific school, this has been our growth. This is what we believe the growth is attributed to. Any thoughts on sort of how that works or what the expectation is?
For the schools? Well, one of the things is the schools were asked with their school improvement plan to share what they're doing within their school and what their focus is. And on the elementary, their goals are related to math and reading. And so, the idea is that during that presentation that they will share what they're doing to improve the math and reading scores within their schools.
Is there an expectation that it's year-round conversations? Or is this just, it's in the school improvement plan?
So, right now, we are in the process of tweaking and working with our school improvement plan, but it's really a cycle of learning in that we're teaching our schools to go through and that you're constantly looking and monitoring at data and making adjustments. Are we there yet where we have a finished product and everyone's doing everything? Not quite, but we're in the process of making sure that people understand the cycle of learning and that they're following the process, and they're constantly looking at student data, and they're making tweaks to their plan and to make sure that the student improvement's going forward. And really getting folks to understand where the extended learning opportunities fall into the school improvement plan and where the core instruction falls into the school improvement plan. And getting everyone to understand where your focus and strategy within your building falls in with that plan as well, and that you're constantly looking at student data and looking at where you are because we all know where we want to go, and that's everyone passing the state test at the end of the year.
And I think that's what I was alluding to, is just ensuring that principals are able to speak directly to that in terms of in their building, and that families are able to understand it in a digestible way, that they feel confident in sort of what's taking place in their school relative to the scores that all the students are getting. As a follow-up to that, just specific to Slides five and seven, are there opportunities for principals to do some peer learning? I mean, I'm just seeing, there's some magic happening at Craig for math, Picklewaxen, North Point. There was some for Davis in Algebra I. Just curious if there's an opportunity for principals to come together to figure out like what's happening in those specific schools that's causing the numbers?
So, they do have opportunities to discuss amongst themselves. Right now, the principals are participating, like I said, in walkthroughs with other principals to look what's going on in other buildings and have the discussions as to what's taking place in each building. And then, I know Dr. Jones gives opportunities for principals to talk about best practices at the principal meetings.
We also have a system of guided visits where they are able... We also have a system of guided visits where they are able to bring their entire professional learning team. Our first rotation of those is, is just going on right now. So it's not just the administrators, but it's teachers also who get to come and walk through other classrooms and see what's going on and, and really reflect on, on what is working well and what they want to adopt, for lack of a better term.
Borrow.
And, and borrow, copy, and take back to their school. But this is, this is a practice that is promoted, because if Melissa has figured it out, it shouldn't be a secret.
Right.
I should be trying it.
And talk a little bit about the structural leadership team meetings and how they're built around that as well.
Right. Our ILT, our instructional leadership team, also comes together about once a month. And so that's a representative from every school. And they sit together and they talk about, in their particular discipline, whether it be reading, math, or gifted and enrichment. They talk about their successes, their challenges, they brainstorm. They, they help each other to come up with solutions. And, and then they can carry that back to their schools. So they also have a very collaborative approach. There are times that we don't have anything structured, but there are times when if we see a school that's really struggling, we might say, you know, you should contact your colleague at school X and see if you can just shadow her for a day and see how, how she's doing and what she's doing so you can bring some ideas back. We really just recommend that on a case-by-case basis. It's not a structured, formal, scheduled thing, but, but it also does exist. And sometimes they seek it out themselves. Sometimes they'll say, who, who knows what? And, and I, can I come and spend a half a day with you?
Appreciate those structured, you know, pair and share opportunities between building leaders. Wanting to jump quickly to slide 17, in terms of the gains and losses from, from the summer boost. And just a quick kudos, heard a lot of great feedback from the community in terms of the summer boosts and the opportunities that were offered. So just wanting to give kudos to Dr. Navarro, to the team. Definitely well done in terms of what was offered and the execution of it. Just curious if there are any, like, what's the hypothesis for the summer gains and losses specifically where there are no positive gains or there was a decline in gains? Is there any theory there?
So we are looking at that data now. We just received this data on Friday. From iReady, and so we were happy we got it on Friday to make sure that we could present it to you today. And we were hoping that we were going to have positive data, so knock on wood.
The majority of it is.
But we will now be looking and breaking down kind of what the data is telling us.
I think the puzzle nationally and here as well is math. I mean, to be honest, and I think we have to, we're only in our third year in most grade levels, but not in the high school grade levels of having, I think, a curriculum that's conceptual mathematics at its core. And a lot of people are turning to math resources that are a little different. But math is a puzzling beast because of that. And I, I'm not a hu, we need a little bit more time, but I'm not 100% sure that a five-week program is as impactful as a strong three-week program or as a strong two-week program. And, you know, we'll come and ask as we review this data a little bit more. But it's, it's, you know, you see the national declines, it's just this, this piece. And this is everything from the kid who is a couple, like a year or so behind to the kid that's doing all kinds of activities and enrichments and everything else. There still is a, is a regression, summer regression that happens specifically in math.
And it also is the hardest teacher to find, a math teacher, a certified math teacher or a math major. There's plenty of jobs, opportunities for people that major in math. And so we, it's also, you know, the biggest target that we have in our professional learning is working with our math teachers and providing opportunities for them to interact with the curriculum and really understand how to deliver the curriculum with fidelity.
No, certainly. I'm definitely interested to see sort of what you all come up with for this next coming iteration of summer boost opportunities, given what we're looking at here. Just three more quick questions. There was a mention of the iReady teacher toolboxes only in some schools. I'm curious kind of what's going to be the impetus to kind of offer it to all schools.
So we, one thing that we do do is, is we pilot things before we go full bore and buy a ton of it. And so we had our, Sheila Hiddle came, came to us and asked if we'd be willing to try it in some of the schools to see whether it's effective or not effective. And if it is effective, then we will look at branching out, buying it for other schools.
Certainly.
That's how we started my path. Now we're doing my path at all levels.
Okay. Lab, the math lab classes. Quick kudos, as a parent who has two students in middle school lab. Love that you all are using the data to guide the sort of breakdown of the math element from core instruction to those who need additional supports versus enrichment. Love that you're sort of looking at the data in that way. Is that offered at all the middle schools?
Yes. So last year we piloted it. To make sure that this was the direction that we wanted to go. We really wanted to look at, at student data. At the end of the year, we saw significant gains. So we expanded to all of the middle schools this year. Yeah, it's going really well.
And my last question, and I thank you to my colleagues for giving me this time. Letters and O-GAP. Love that we are focusing on, again, how to continue to build the core of our instructional leaders and ensuring that they have the best training that can be offered. Curious if there's any thought about offering it to parents? With parents being the, the first teacher? Just curious if there is opportunity for parents to better understand how to break down standards, how to do some of this work at home with their students, with their child.
So we're not ready to talk about that yet, but enough to say that there is work happening to do some parent engagement that we're going to start doing around reading. We may get maybe some funding support. So we're not ready to talk about that, but absolutely there is a lot of work happening behind the scenes on some decisions we're going to do, starting very young with our precares and even younger to get our families to help us build some foundations and support foundations. We're just not quite ready to talk about it yet.
No, appreciate that. We're on the same wavelength and something is afoot. So, you know, because it's more than just sending your child to their special corner to read or do that special math that only you know how to do. So just making sure families are brought in for support.
And Ms. Smith, if I could add, when I look at the summer gains, losses, and I look at the national numbers, just not even looking just at Charles County, the math is so significantly not as good as the reading. And I think that's because parents are much more comfortable reading with children and doing those things and taking them to the library, you know. But who's going to, who's going to take their sixth grader and say, let's do some fraction work, you know, this July?
Just one of us.
Other than Mr. Roberts. So I think when, when summer at-home learning occurs, it's much more concentrated, at least for the elementary level, in the reading and literacy than it would be in math or another content area.
Certainly. Thank you again.
Thanks. Questions? If we could try to be brief, because we do have one speaker for public comment, Mr. Schwartz told me. So Ms. Kramer?
No problem. Ms. Smith asked most of the questions that I had, so thank you, Ms. Smith. Appreciate that. But I just wanted to thank you all for this presentation. I think it's very comprehensive and it's really helpful to hear from different vantage points. As a parent, as a board member, and I think also for the benefit of the public. My son also attended summer boosts last summer. And that coupled with the math lab that's now being offered in middle school, I feel like is really going to help him because he is one of these kids that is struggling with math and doing really well in reading. But that math, you know, he's still struggling with some concepts that I think were missed probably somewhere throughout the COVID or post-COVID years. So just really appreciate you, you illustrating all of the multiple opportunities, because as parents, we know the gaps are there. But to see a plan and a very detailed plan, I think is really helpful for parents and for the public, you know, to see that, yes, you know, some of the numbers are truly, you know, disheartening. But to see that there is a plan and that we're going to continue to use the data to drive these interventions. And I'm really just happy to hear that, I can't wait to hear what's going to happen with summer boost next year and, and the different things that you have planned. So just wanted to thank you for that. Also wanted to just plug that my son has one of the international teachers for math lab this year. And that's been really, really helpful to him so far. So really grateful for that opportunity and I thought that was a great idea to separate math lab. Because it's really hard with that, it's, it's so important, math for those blocks, but it's also difficult to maintain their focus for that long. So separating that and providing an opportunity where he just works in small groups most of the time in math lab is really helpful. And so I just want to say kudos to everyone who was instrumental in developing this in, in the pilot and assessing it and then deploying it to all of our middle schools. Because I truly think it's going to be a game changer. So really appreciate you all for that. And I, I too was looking at the numbers in summer boosts, but as I said, Ms. Smith asked the question I had, which was some of the outliers like sixth grade math and eighth grade ELA that had a higher gain for no boost than if they took boost. So I'm just curious about what you uncover from that. So I will, I'll wait for, you know, future presentations on that. But again, just want, you know, to thank you all. And this is really illustrative of the fact that we're being very intentional. And a lot of parents asked me about boost, you know, this past summer and wanted to know, well, how do we know what to work with or what our kids are going to be taught? And what interventions are going to be applied? And, and how do, how do we know how the lessons are being developed? And you really explained that today. So I just thank you again for that.
Thanks, Ms. Marley.
Yes, to echo what my colleague said, very much appreciate this. Because as you know, the end of the day, the data drives everything. I also fully understand, as you do, that not all students test well. So you do have to take that into account, that, you know, there are plenty of students that can explain to you how to do said math problem, but maybe have test anxiety or any number of reasons why they may not have performed well. With that said, I agree with what my colleague said. It, it is disheartening. I mean, just, just being candid. I do appreciate that you all are being proactive and that you're not just saying, well, we know it's probably going to be bad. Let's just wait and see. And I think that's going to help mitigate a lot of, just candidly, the damage that may have occurred. And just speaking from personal experience, at the state of the schools, when we went to the breakout sessions and I met with my son's schools, shout out to Ms. Hungerford. She did a fantastic job of just breaking it down. Not, not that, I'm sorry, the other, the other Ms. Hungerford. Although I have to give you a shout out separately. And I, I did not, and I don't think, just speaking in the, the small group that was in there, I don't think anyone left there feeling hopeless or anyone left there feeling like there's nothing that can happen for my student. I mean, she really took the time to answer, admittedly, my son had four or five questions about PBIS, just sidebar. But she really took the time to explain, these are your options. If your student is struggling, if they're struggling in X, Y, and Z, pick one. This is what we're offering them. And my son has the opposite problem to Ms. Kramer's son. He's doing great in math, but has always hated reading. And so there's a fight, but I had something for him. So when I went to that iReady webinar and it reinforced about, one, just shout out to you all. That was an excellent presentation, lots of great questions answered. And when they reinforced about the FEV tutoring, I said, hmm, let me just see. I emailed them Thursday night and that next day, Friday, he may not have been happy, but I was thrilled. He had a tutor. And they're like, do you want to do five days a week, six days a week, seven days a week? I was like, oh, man. So I can, I can speak from personal experience. They're quick responses, they can get your child in pretty quickly. He's already feeling more confident, which I think for a lot of these kids is a lot of the problem. So I, thank you all very much for this. Curious about the Saturday programs that might be in the minority, but I can ask you all offline. I understand the interest of, of time, as I'm the one that, you know, school is your job as a student. You know, we don't want to burn you out, but we do want to consistently reinforce, because I've seen the summer side, so I completely understand. It's a very real thing. And to Ms., I think Ms. Kramer's point and Dr. Navarro's point, I'm also curious to see what summer boost is going to look like and would it be potentially a longer day of, you know, fewer weeks, you know, does it really make a difference? So thank you all again. This was great.
Thanks. All right. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. Have a good evening.
Yeah. I agree. It helps to understand the relationship. I'm going to be in school every day.
Schwartz?
I will read the rules for public forums. Speakers should identify themselves. Statements should be brief, to the point, and limited to three minutes or less. Board members should not be expected to respond during the forum to statements made by speakers. When appropriate, CCPS staff may address the speaker's concerns directly. Statements should relate to Charles County Board of Education agenda items or any education-related topic with the following limitations. Personnel matters pending or potential appeals, or the comments regarding the actions or statements of individual staff or the private lives of any individual are not appropriate topics. Proper language and decorum are required at all times. This evening, we have one speaker signed up, Tina Wilson.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Tina Wilson and I reside in District One. And while I'm think, thinking about it, a couple of weeks ago, I had the pleasure of going over to St. Charles to see the old, the all-county thespian play A Chorus Line. It was awesome. So I know this buys into my three minutes, but having said all of that, I know you've, you guys, it's been a long night, a long day. It's my understanding that a process is underway by the Board of Ed to decide on a replacement of a District One board member who stepped down several months ago. I want to bring to your attention a couple of things. I was surprised to find that the virtual option signup had closed on Friday. Hence the reason why I'm standing before you today. I would recommend that it be reinstated so that signups close on the day of the public forum. Parents working outside the county would probably benefit, benefit from having this option. It's also my understanding that interviews were conducted on October 20th for the District One replacement and recorded. I'm sorry I missed the live interview. I think many others did so as well because of competing priorities. When I checked this morning, the link on the Charles County Public Schools YouTube website showed several events, but not the interviews. I think these interviews will be very useful for the public. Let me be clear. I understand the law gives you the authority to make this important decision on who replaces this District One seat. But the community deserves the opportunity to express their preference. So creating a little time on your calendar for public comment after the videos are posted, I think would be a wise investment. With that said, and because the process is not exactly clear on what the next steps are, such as public participation, I don't know when it's going to be. I'm going to take the opportunity to press, present mine. And I'm going to make the recommendation that Jennifer Abel, who has extensive experience in school board policy as well as parliamentarian procedures, without question would make a great choice. We, many in the community in District One can accept the, the idea or the notion that during a normal election process, she would wholeheartedly win the support and confidence of District One. So thank you for this opportunity to come, come before you to express my personal choice. But I strongly encourage you to afford the citizens of District One their opportunity to express their preference. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
That was our only speaker.
All right, thanks. You know, let's take a quick break. We'll come back at 6:30. Okay, welcome back, everyone. We're going to pick up on the agenda. So next up is the Board Handbook. And we can talk about this a little if you want, but I'd like to thank Dr. Navarro Shelley for making this look nice, formatting it, and for everyone that had comments. So we're going to have this for our board retreat, and this was sent to the facilitator of the retreat. So we'll have something to talk to. And it's, you know, it's a draft document, it's a living document. But if, if you have any, you know, big- if you have any, you know, big comments, if there's something glaring that's there, please point it out. But otherwise, this is just for reference, so we'll have something to speak to when we get together at the retreat.
I had a quick question.
Yes, Ms. Warren.
Communications, where it's talked about communications, you know, between the superintendent and the board member. I didn't see any distinction, and I don't know that it should be when it comes to like the chair meeting with the superintendent or the vice chair meeting with the superintendent. Does that need to be clarified, or is that just?
So I think
Did I miss something?
We talked about, yeah, further down at the board. On the next page, it talks about the board, the chair, and the vice. The board chair, the vice chair, and the superintendent having agenda-setting meetings. So it specifically calls out those meetings to happen. And then, to your point though, we do have weekly meetings where minutes are taken and distributed to the rest of the board. But that's something we could certainly put in there too.
Oh, okay. Okay, wait a minute, I was looking at two different parts. All right, well, that's clear.
Yeah, for agenda-setting meetings, but, no, but you bring up a good point, I mean, we could certainly put something in there, since, you know, it's been an ongoing practice to have weekly meetings with the superintendent, we could put something in there to reflect that as well.
I think I was just thinking about the part where I read something about, let me see. Basically, if we wanted to bring something, like if I wanted to have a one-on-one with the superintendent, it's really not to make requests or to share or to, how did it word it? Or to
All information will be shared with all the board members.
Correct, yeah, I was just wondering about that.
Okay.
If I had a specific topic that I was interested in, of course, I can't find it right now. But it just basically said, don't talk to the superintendent about things that you personally, I don't want to say personally, but maybe an individual passion or a topic that you're interested in, instead bringing it before the board. Right, is that right?
So you're looking under the communications part?
Yes, let me see, maybe under individual board and member requests. Individual board member requests.
Yeah, well, not to speak for the superintendent, but feel free to talk to the superintendent whenever you would like. She would gladly entertain that.
Future consideration.
You can do that whenever you'd want. I think the distinction there is task, an individual tasking the superintendent or staff for something that may not necessarily be a board a board position or opinion.
Okay.
Good?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Anything else from anybody? Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Chairman. Just curious about the repercussions in the event that a board member does not adhere to what's here in the handbook.
So some, but not all of what's in here is in policy. So, you know, depending on what it is, there are things in policy that outline repercussions for violation of that policy. To your question though, that would be whatever the board wishes to place in the document.
I mean, there wasn't anything that struck me as counter to how we should conduct ourselves individually as adults, but also as elected officials, also jointly as a board or collectively as a board. But I was just curious about, then what is the stick, if you will, in the event that someone does not follow what's already been established that we eventually will collectively, excuse me, agree to?
No, I'll repeat my first statement, it's whatever the board wants to make it. And so if there's, you know, it obviously, if there, if it's, again, refers back to policy and there's already a mechanism for things that are in policy, you may have to develop another policy that points specifically to the board handbook, right? And talk about if you violate things in the board handbook. Since there are some things in there that are not anyplace else in board policy.
Nope, that's helpful, that's what I was looking for, thank you.
Okay, that's just my opinion, Mr. Schwartz will tell me if I'm wrong, but. Ms. Morley?
Just, I was going to just touch, I see the special note on page 10 that if the board member shouldn't, you know, not adhere to the protocols established by the governing board, the board chair, blah, 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 it will meet with the board member to address the issue. Is that what you were referring to, Ms. Smith, something along those lines?
It was, it was, and I was, I think, looking for more teeth.
Okay.
So I'll use myself as an example. This obviously won't happen because, you know, I'm me. But if I were to just abscond and do something completely different, I want to do my own thing, I'd completely violate what's in here. Is it just a conversation with you and Chairman Lucas as a verbal reprimand? Is there anything additional that would keep me in line with what we have collectively established?
Okay, I think that's an interesting.
Yeah, so I think that's something we could
We could discuss.
We could discuss. My initial response would be if there is an issue, then everyone needs to know about it, not just certain people. So I wouldn't necessarily use your example as one that we should follow. But I hear what you're saying.
A suggestion, Chairman, if we could maybe pull out the relevant policies and have that be part of the retreat? Because I know a couple of them are referenced, but
So those were in, so a couple of them are in here.
Okay, yeah, I see like the Board Bylaw 9000, but that's not like a specific, you know what I mean, like that's the series?
Seven, on page seven, the confidentiality policy is is that superintendent?
So I sent the board something earlier today as I read this and as also I prepare for the retreat. And I sent a compilation of policies that we probably as a team need to do a walkthrough, a cross-walkthrough. First of all, that we don't have something in policy that we would be violating or in contradiction in the handbook. And then I think part of the retreat is talking about and learning from how boards manage themselves. And then what's the process for that? I mean, we have an ethics policy, we have a series of policies. And so for me, I think you got a, you know, some technical things of the document, and then I think I sent you like 10 pages worth of all the policies. We're happy to have those for the retreat too, just so we can get into the discussions around boards governing themselves and what would that look like? And just as a, just as a plug, the people that we have coming to facilitate the work session, they work with boards, so they can tell us also best practices of how boards approach these same dilemmas that you're asking about.
Ms. Butler-Washington?
Yes, up on the board member district meetings, when it says board member will not receive assistance from CCPS staff to include the superintendent to conduct a district meeting. Couldn't that be simply if the superintendent say if she wants to do it or not? It's up still up to her, she can say no, or she can say yes. So it's the same thing. So by saying this, if she wanted to be included into something, or wanted to do something, you just extirp her out that she cannot be included.
So let me get to the
So I can understand CCPS staff. I don't think none of us would ask that, but for the superintendent, she could simply say no.
So what, let me make sure I'm looking at the same thing, what page is it?
10. 10.
Oh, that's right. Right, so so in deference to the superintendent's time, I think the thought was, and Ms. Morley, if I got this wrong, tell me, when that language was put in there based on suggestions from the two committees that met, you have four districts and an at-large person. And if they had quarterly or even twice-a-year meetings in their districts and the superintendent was expected to be at all of them, that would be a lot of the superintendent's time. And so to make it easier for the superintendent by saying the superintendent's not going to come to these individual meetings, of course, at town halls and things like that, then no one is feeling pressured, or the superintendent's not feeling pressured to go to one district meeting versus another. And that's, so that's why that was put in there. And again, even if you had two of these a year, so now you're talking 10 times that the superintendent has to come out, and that's just a lot of her time. And Ms. Morley, if you could have anything else to add?
Yeah, I was going to say that the key word, I think, that we discussed was the assistance piece, because of course that leads to time, with defining the venue, with the planning, with all of that. And not making it appear that we were tasking the superintendent or requiring her to attend. So the way that I read it, if the superintendent chooses to attend, but she'd be attending and not necessarily expected to, you know, answer questions or actively participate, because it would be the board member that would be hosting the town hall. And the superintendent more or less would be like a guest, if that makes sense. But it's not an expectation that, you know, four districts at large, the superintendent
I am never a guest in a room about education.
She's like, I'm always a VIP.
I am never a guest.
But just being considered of the superintendent, that was my understanding. Was that yours, Mr.?
No, I get that, but it's still up to the superintendent to say yes or no. I don't think she's going to come to everybody's thing if she has something to do. So it's still up to her to say yes or no, but with this language, you're telling us not to even ask her. That's what this language says. Will not receive assistance to assist.
To assist.
Not necessarily to attend. So attendance is something, could always invite her. But you're not expecting her to help with the planning. Will not receive assistance from the staff to include this superintendent.
Right, correct, assistance from the staff, so
Will not ask for assistance from the staff.
Well, this will codify that, yeah. Ms. Smith?
No, just wanted to echo what's already been said. I think this puts the superintendent, our one and only employee, in a precarious situation if we don't have firm language in terms of where she's expected to engage and we're not. For instance, if she attends your event, Ms. Butler-Washington, yet she doesn't attend my event, or she attends Ms. Warren's event, but not Mr. Hancock's event, I think that puts her in a very interesting position in that it's not a balanced approach to being able to support families across the county in the different districts. It just presents a real issue. And then when it comes down to the evaluation, I think it could be a biased review if, again, she supported your event, but not my event. So I think across the board, if there is no expectation that she support or attend, well, not support, but that she does not attend the events, I think that that's fair.
Okay, well, as long as it's not an event that I can ask, because it could be an event that she could, she possibly want to come to. So still asking the question, can she attend? So as long as it don't violate that, that's what I'm saying, I can still ask her. So is that the understanding?
I have a different understanding.
Well, that's what I did, I did too.
Right, and I think we need to clarify the language. My expectation would be that we don't ask her to attend.
That's why I asked.
And I think that's up for, you know, colleagues to support. Perhaps it'll go your way, perhaps it'll go in the way in which that was discussed. But I think it's a matter of, again, not putting her in a situation where she could not be successful in that she has to pick and choose where she goes, because you asked. She can support yours, but not mine. Again, I think it puts her in a real interesting position.
I have a question. I think, I mean, I'm just listening, I'm thinking that, for me, it's a matter of communicating with a colleague. Like if you're having something on May 5th and I'm decided to have something on May 5th. That's your birthday, isn't it? I know, but anyway, right. You know, it's just a matter of communicating, like, hey, you know, when are you having your event? I mean, that's just as simple for me. And then as far as holding it against her, you know, during her evaluation, that's, I mean, I go into it for myself, that's not something that I would do. I mean, I understand that it's four districts and, you know, it's a big county, so I wouldn't really have any expectation, but I think an invite is okay. But to say, hey, you have to be, you know, just have an expectation that she'll be there. It's like, if she comes, she comes, if she don't, she don't. I mean, that's just me.
She's our employee. We're, as a professional, you cannot show up for your job, you cannot not show up for your job. Your employer has made a request that you attend something, you can't shirk that responsibility and just not attend.
Again, I guess for me, it's communication, even between me and that superintendent.
So I think, yeah, so I think, so it's good discussion, and this will be a good topic for the retreat.
Just briefly, if I could, the only concern I have with if the superintendent attends certain individual district meetings is it can give the impression that it's a board position, that it's, that an individual board member is speaking on behalf of the board. And only the chairman can do that. I think it would give that, we run the risk of giving that impression. That's my only concern with it. And even as a guest, she's still going to be approached with a lot of questions, I think.
I get it.
Just my thoughts.
If you're having a, I see it done in other counties, and French Orange County is huge and they do it. So it don't seem like a big deal to them. So I'm saying, he doesn't come to all, he comes to some. She comes to all, she doesn't come to all. That, to me, is fine. If she doesn't come to mine, I'm not going to hold it against her. She can't make it because she got competing activities she got to do, so I understand that. So I'm just saying, asking her would be different than saying, you cannot. And I don't want anyone, especially as I am as an elected official, telling me I cannot. That doesn't work. Because when you're any other elected, they don't say, you cannot. Talk to or ask him. It's up to the individual to say yes or no, and we all adults and we understand that if she can't come to your event, or she can't come to my event, I perfectly understand that. But extending it up, the
Invitation.
Invitation is different for me. It's just saying, you know, I'm going to have these certain people here, and would you like to come? Yes, daughter, no, daughter, okay, I keep moving. So asking a question to me doesn't seem a big thing.
Yep, so, Ms. Smith?
If I may, and I'll be brief. Perhaps a way to split the baby is if the board agrees to a certain number of district-wide events or district-specific events a year. So that way, it's not too much of the superintendent's time to be able to support the event. So perhaps it's just three district-wide events a year, and we rotate kind of whose district those events are going to be in, if that's interest for my colleagues to entertain. So just putting another option on the table for us to discuss, I presume during the retreat.
All right, I think it's all good conversation. To her credit, the superintendent has not said a single word.
Except that she's never a guest.
Yeah, yeah, never a guest.
I always get questions.
All right, so, well, again, there's draft stamped all over this, and we'll have this ready for our retreat. Anything else on that? Next, Mr. Schwartz.
Good evening, sir. I'm going to present again the 2024 Legislative Position Paper for the Board. This was presented at a previous meeting. This is a document that the Board adopts annually as a basis for taking positions in Annapolis on various bills, both through MAAB and through PIZAM, and with our legislators. It's not intended to be all-encompassing, it's not intended to cover every potential bill It's not intended to cover every potential bill that may come up. Any bills that we think the Board may want to take a position on, the Board can certainly do that individually as they are introduced. This is coming for adoption at the next Board meeting. We will have this adopted, hopefully, before the legislative breakfast at the end of November.
Sorry. Something as you typed? Or as you spoke, I'm sorry, as I typed? Any questions or any comments on this? Yeah, Ms. Smith?
No, I was just going to inquire about the right time to update the list of legislative proposals. Would that be here in this forum or would that be in a different forum?
No, this is, this is the time, if you'd like to bring something up, this is the time, like, I think we mentioned at the last meeting, if there's, if there's something that the Board wishes to have ready for the legislative breakfast, the sooner we get that discussion going, the better.
Certainly. Well, I'll take a moment to gather my thoughts, but I will yield to Ms. Morley.
Yeah, I had a similar thought and question. And have something I would like for the Board to consider adding to this, these legislative proposals. It's something that, candidly, I think has been long overdue. I'd like us to consider an increase to both the SMOB, I believe it's called a stipend, that the SMOB receives, which is currently $1,000 a year, and also to consider an increase for the Board compensation. It's been about 10 years, if I'm not mistaken, since that has occurred. So, my understanding is if the Board is in agreement that we would request that the superintendent look into this for the next meeting.
And if I could just comment without speaking to the merits of that, we do not have to add that to the legislative position document. We can have that as a standalone bill that we would like to introduce in Annapolis.
Okay.
So, just keep that in mind. If the Board is interested in pursuing that, we could certainly draft a proposed bill for the Board to look at and then propose it to our legislators.
Okay.
The earlier the better.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
And to be clear, for the bill like that, if in fact it did pass, well, things are a little different now, but for the sake of argument, I'll say it wouldn't be effective until 2025? Six? Well, so, with, with, with an election next year, it could potentially, but I don't know that the Board would want to have that position. But for, when the Board was elected as a whole, it was always for the next election, correct?
Typically, when there's an increase in salaries for any legislative, any elected position, it doesn't take effect unless there's an intervening election. It would take effect after the following election. So, if the Board were to adopt it this year or for next year, it would take effect after the next elected Board is chosen. Now, there is an elected position coming up next year, as Mr. Lucas is pointing out. And so, the legislation would have to address whether it would address just that one board member or that wouldn't, that increase wouldn't kick in until the rest of the Board is up for election.
Okay.
And for increases to the student member compensation, it could take effect next year because there is an intervening choosing of that board member, that student board member.
Okay.
Okay.
That would be all right with me if the SMOB is able to get it first. I'd be all right with that.
So, I only say that-
Depending on how the legislation is drafted.
Right, assuming it happens, yeah, yeah.
So, I only say that to note that the urgency for the Board part isn't as critical as time-wise as the urgency for the SMOB part.
Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Butler-Washington?
I was gonna say, you say that, but if legislative, when they write it, if they so approve it, they could put in there, affect it whenever they want to do, right?
Boy, putting me on the spot for that. It may be a constitutional issue. I think it may be a constitutional provision that increases in compensation for elected members can't take effect unless there's an intervening election. Now, I say that without knowing for sure, so honest, I have to research that. But if there's nothing in the Constitution about that, yes. However the legislation is drafted and passed, that's what would be implemented.
Yeah, I think it's whatever the legislature says it is. It's not, I don't think it's the Constitution. It's whatever they deem to say it is.
For the record, I would never vote for, to give myself an increase while sitting in a position. Let me just make that clear.
For the record, I have to say the same.
That's fair. Oh, Ms. Kramer, Ms. Smith?
The commissioner did it, right.
Uh, Ms. Kramer.
Oh, Ms. Smith was first.
No, I was just gonna ask clarification from Mr. Schwartz. You mentioned the standalone bill versus kind of putting it in the legislative issues that's been drafted. What's the pros and cons of not having it in both places?
This document is intended to be a continuing position paper. This is our position paper that we adopt year-to-year, continuing. So, we wouldn't want to put something in here continuing year-to-year to say we want a raise for the Board because that would imply we'd want to raise consistently. But a standalone bill certainly could be voted on by the Board individually to propose a raise just this one particular time coming up.
Okay, just wanted to know the clarification. Thank you.
Ms. Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. And I just wanted to say that I support what Ms. Morley has proposed for both the student member of the Board increasing the stipend and for the Board a compensation increase. As she noted, it's been about 10 years since the Board has received an increase in compensation. And as we all have seen, almost a year in, this role, this position entails a lot of work that the average person doesn't fully understand, I don't think, until you actually take on the role. And, you know, to see that also, you know, we're taking care of our, obviously, the school system priorities first, you know, and foremost, and making sure that our county is, you know, competitive when it comes to staffing and, you know, other salaries and things. I just think that it shows, you know, value and also places the necessary weight that this role carries by acknowledging that it's been a significant amount of time since there's been an increase for the Charles County Board of Education. So, I do support what Ms. Morley has suggested.
A question, Mr. Schwartz. The legislation that was passed that changed how the Board was elected, were the salaries included as part of that?
There was no change in the salary as part of that bill. It's the same section of the law, same general area, title of the law, but it's not, it was not changed in that bill.
Okay, okay. So, I bring that up because I think something else, and if they were related, this is why I ask the question, so I have a couple of thoughts. I think that the Board should consider how that bill, the bill that changed the way the Board is elected, how that came about originally. There were, it was introduced, there was going to be three at-large members and one board member from each district. And then, the members at large would serve initially a two-year term and then a subsequent four-year term. And that was purposeful to introduce stagger in the Board, and that was part of the reasoning. Well, in all the gyrations of the bill, as often happens, it went to two board members from each district and one at-large. And, but the two-year term stuck with the at-large position. So, I think it would behoove the Board to submit to our legislators that we introduce something that puts the stagger back into the Board of Education, which is what they wanted to do originally, anyway. So, that's why I ask if the salary was part of that and if that, if that was the bill to look at or if we needed to do something separately. And again, kind of like the Board's salary, not necessarily an immediate thing. And then, the other thing that I'll bring up is if, maybe you don't know the answer, but if the Charter Government Proposal, if that were to pass, we would no longer have Commissioner Districts. And our elected positions are based on Commissioner Districts, so.
No, 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 just inquiry.
Wait, excuse me, Ms., but excuse me, Ms. Butler-Washington. So, with that, so I'm asking you, would that have to be changed?
I'm looking at a board member shaking her head, "No." If the Commissioner Districts were to be taken out of the law, generally for the Commissioners, then the Board of Education election bill would have to be addressed so that the districts would be Board of Education districts. So, whether they take districts out of the law for Commissioners or not would affect how the Board is selected. And concerning the issue about the staggering of the board members that you just raised, it is a separate section of the law, but it can be in the same bill if there were one bill introduced to address the Board of Education as a whole. So, it can be in one bill, even though it's a separate section of the law.
Okay.
It's in the same subtitle of the education article.
One bill. Now, Ms. Butler-Washington, please.
I want to correct that about the Charter. They won't be called Commissioner, they will be called Councilmen, and they will run in their districts. So, they still will be districts.
Well, I-
They will be Councilmen instead of, that's the only difference.
I-
They will still be district, they have to run in their district.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
But the law that specifies how we are elected states, "We are elected by Commissioner Districts."
It would just change to council.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't just change. That's, that's the point that I'm trying to make. I think, I think the point I'm trying to make is that I believe, and if you don't know the answer, I believe that if the Charter does pass, that there would have to be some sort of change to the legislation to reflect that. And that might be then an opportunity, if the Board so chooses, in one fell swoop, to introduce all these things that we spoke about if there's going to have to be a modification, anyway.
So, that modification from Commissioner Districts to Councilmember Districts can be done in various ways. But one way it can be done is if a bill passes in Annapolis to make Charles County a charter county, they would go through the, all of the sections of the law talking about Commissioner Districts and amend those to Council Districts. That can be in a bill addressing that Charter Government issue. Can be one particular bill that addresses throughout the education article, throughout all of the annotated code. It can be one bill. Or it can be, as you're saying, a bill just for the Board of Education addressing that provision, in which case, it could open up that whole section of the law for other changes that we might want as well.
Okay, got it. Ms. Morley? Sorry, Ms. Butler-Washington, sorry.
Okay. So, if the Charter passes, just information for the Board, if it passes next year, it won't go in effect into 2026. So, that's the difference. So, I was gonna say the same thing as Board Member Kramer said, that I do support it. And for the same very reason, because if you look across the districts, especially our enabler, they gets, they, theirs is $16,000 a year. So, they do the same thing we do. So, I'm just pointing out the numbers that's saying that, you know, big difference there. So, that was my analogies for that. Thank you.
Ms. Morley?
Just for the benefit of the public who may not know, because candidly, I didn't know. And you do not run for this position because of the compensation. Let's be clear. You cannot make a living on it at all. It's $500 a month before taxes, which is paid quarterly, plus as a humble transportation stipend. And being candid, it's not enough to cover gas. So, typically, on any given week, just using myself as an example, it can vary from 20 hours, sometimes 30 hours a week, depending on meetings and preparation and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, when I did the math, it averages to about $5 an hour. So, we're not talking about something that's going to break the budget. This is not going to be, you know, humbly, even if we doubled everyone's salary here, we wouldn't even hit $100,000 extra a year, not even close to that. So, I just want the public to understand, we're not talking about a quarter million dollars or some excessive amount of money. But as has been raised, this is something that, you know, several of us do feel strongly about because, one, it has not happened again in 10 years. And, two, because the level of effort and work and commitment that we're putting into it, I just candidly believe that the board members can justify that because, as you know, we are a visible and working Board. We're very active in the community. So, we're not just showing up just to these meetings and be like, oh, by the way, give us a raise. So, to my original point, I would like to propose this for this current upcoming legislative breakfast. Now, it's up to, obviously, the delegation to vote up or down, to take it up or not take it up because it's not something that we can vote on for ourselves other than to present it to them. So, that was my other point. Thank you.
So, what, I think you started, but we got in discussion. So, what's the action? So, the action is just not, we need to pay increase. I think I heard talk about asking the superintendent. So, what's, what's the action?
Yes, that was the request, to ask the superintendent to do a presentation, preferably at the next meeting, since we are coming up against the legislative breakfast in November, just to, for comparison purposes of compensation of similarly situated districts. Understanding it won't necessarily be a perfect fit, but just as a starting point.
Okay, just want to make sure we got that documented.
Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Hancock?
Thank you, Chairman. And I just want to know if the Board would be in agreeance with an idea that I have, being, is it something that relates to something we're going through now on the same topic as the same bill that restructured the Board of Education? It wouldn't help us now, but I would like in the future, if the Board agrees, if we could talk to our delegates and our representatives about it, if there's ever a vacancy again on the Board, that it be filled through a special election. I would like to personally see that change in law.
So, would that be addressed directly to the bill, the bill that was passed?
Correct, it could be. And I will say, I'm not familiar with, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if you know any different, I'm not familiar with any school system that has special elections to fill vacancies. Vacancies are generally filled either by the Board of Education directly, which is only a couple of counties in the state that does it that way, or the governor or the county government that does it, either the county executive or the county commissioners. So, that's the typical way to do it. I'm not aware of a special election, which can be time-consuming and costly, in a sense. But the idea of having another way of selecting or filling the vacancy is certainly up for something the Board can consider, including a special election, if that's what the Board wants to propose.
Well, I think what I would say is that at our next meeting, it seems like all things are focused around the Board. That's, we've talked about them a little bit, but if anyone has anything more specific, then we can discuss that at the next, at the meeting next month.
Point of order.
Yeah.
How are we proceeding, then? Are we taking these individually? Is the Board voting these up and down to support? Are we just gonna address all of them at the next meeting?
We can, we can address them individually at the next meeting. And then, and-
Yeah, because typically, we ask if there's Board support before proceeding, that's why I ask.
Well, I mean, sorry, maybe what I said didn't come out correctly. We're gonna have our next meeting. Someone, someone could come to the next meeting and say, "I would like to do this." Because now, they've thought about something completely different at the next meeting.
No, but as it relates to the suggestions that we heard today. Yeah.
Okay, so, the issues today, then, are the stipend for the, for the SMOB? And propose, so, so, the stipend for the SMOB, is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
She's like, "Yes."
Okay, okay. And then, for salary increase for, for Board of Education members?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so, who's a yes for that? One, two, three, four, five, so that's six. Okay, so that's a go. So, to Mr. Hancock's statement, so, again, it doesn't preclude Mr. Hancock from talking about it at the next meeting. We're not, he can, he can gather information and bring whatever he likes. Okay? But that doesn't need an up or down from the majority of the Board.
There's another one in my notes. So, one of the things that I was thinking that might be helpful for the Board, and I heard, is for the two items that we just discussed, we will be ready to present, potentially in November, a comparison of similarly situated districts and across the state, what that looks like, as well as potentially draft- looks like, as well as potentially draft what a possible language could look like for the board to have something. But I heard also potentially draft something regarding the staggering of board members and the length of term of the chair. You mentioned the two-year cycle and that piece, so I also had a note at which I'd like to see if there is a-
Yeah, so that's-
That's the third one that I have.
Yes, that's a fair point.
If there's an interest in that, then we can also bring that back.
Yeah. So how does the board feel about the original intent of the legislation to stagger terms?
No.
That's the version how it is now.
No.
Could you clarify what you mean by staggered terms? Because currently, we have staggered terms.
Yeah. The at-large, and then another position.
At-large versus district elected members.
I think I was clear enough, but I can see the board's position. When the bill was originally introduced, it was only going to be a seven-member board. And so the board was half-staggered. As the legislation was changed, and it went to a nine-member board, the initial two-year term only stuck with the at-large member. So the board's not staggered in the original intent that was, that the legislation was brought forth. And so what I'm saying is, you know, honor what the legislation was originally intended to do and stagger the board. I mean, that's, I don't know how I could be more clear.
I mean, perhaps.
Yeah.
Just to dig a bit deeper, when you say to stagger the board, heard what you said. Are you essentially saying that, for instance, by districts, since we're elected by twos, that you would recommend that each district elected member's time be staggered?
So that you're not electing district for-
Off-cycle. Is that what you mean, or are you saying, like, I need additional information for the proposal to understand which way to go?
I think that'd be something we have to talk about, on the best way to do that.
No, because what I'm hearing, if I could finish, is you basically want to go back to that original legislation.
Correct. Correct.
And what is the benefit in doing that?
So the benefit is, one, that's what the original legislation, how it was written, but to have a staggered board, you don't, you run the risk of potentially having, you know, nine new people. To do that for any elected body is just, you lose kind of corporate knowledge, and it just, it provides more fluidity through the election process when new people come on.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
So it just, if you run the risk of having an entire new elected body come on, which can, depending, can offer some challenges in trying to, since everybody is new, learning everything. And so having a staggered board, and by the way, the board used to be staggered until about twenty years ago. And just offering that stagger, it would just give a little better insurance that you have people on the board that have a little experience combined with people that are new via the election process.
Okay.
Yeah. So Ms. Butler-Washington, and then Ms. Morley.
So when you say stagger, so that'd be, each district will have one person?
No, 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 not changing that. Not changing that.
So you add an additioner?
No. No. There'll still be nine people on the board. There'll still be nine people on the board.
If, if-
I'm sorry, tent including these two as board members, yes.
If two people, if, okay, it's two in the district, that's eight right there. And then you large, and then a student. So where the extra two people coming from that's running from member large?
I didn't say that. I didn't say that. In the original bill, the original bill had three at-large members and one person from each district.
That's what I just said.
That's what the original, that's what the-
Right, right, right. So that's what I'm saying.
So I'm not suggesting that we change the number of board members. All I'm suggesting is, is that you stagger the elections.
No, 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 I got that. I'm saying that the way you're saying it, it won't be two people from each district because of the original way it was before. That's all I was saying.
I did not say that. I'm sorry if you took it that way. No, there would still be two people from each district. There would still be two people from each district.
And three large?
No, two people from each district and one person at large. Nothing would change about the number of people. But in the next election, you'd need to figure out a process to where, to where certain people are staggered. And that's, Ms. Morley.
Yeah, I think the fact that we, as a board, aren't clear or in agreeance on what this would look like is probably an indication that we shouldn't proceed. I think if the legislation wants to take that up, then certainly, or if you want to draft something, Mr. Lucas, for us to consider, but this is not something I can support. I don't even have agreement on what that would look like.
Okay. I will present something, it's pretty simple. One, the next time that there's an election, one person from each district would serve a two-year term, and then after that, serve a subsequent four-year term.
But that's what Ms. Butler-Washington was just saying. She was saying one person from each district would be elected at a time, that's what she just said.
So that's why I said, no, I don't vote for that.
So you're proposing that?
Not only, not initially.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'll draft it up. I'll draft it up.
And then I do have one more bullet, just for clarification. Just for follow-ups. We had a little bit of a conversation about the possible changes to county government regarding a charter government. And there is, Ms. Butler-Washington mentioned that there wouldn't be any changes, but does the board want us to confirm the, what we talked about, the implications of language that would need to be fully changed throughout to ensure that Board of Education members are not tied to district, commissioner districts?
So I think it would behoove us as a board just to write something we can present to the commissioners or to the-
We won't be commissioner, we-
Charter board. But to clarify, not just that, but any concerns that we may have as a board regarding how the Board of Education should or should not be affected. And to be clear, I haven't seen anything that indicates that. But Ms. Butler-Washington.
I will send it to Dr. Navarro. It's against the law for this Board of Education to be in the charter. The reason Prince George County is in theirs, the legislators voted for them to be on there. Not that the charter board did it, because it's against the law. They went against the law to have that done. Charles County already reached out, delegate and senator already reached out and said that would never be, so don't ask. And we was never going to ask. So there is no need to send a letter, because we cannot do it per law. And I will send Dr. Navarro the language that says it. Mako stated it when he was at our last board meeting. And before that, Frederick County Executive stated it. So I will send the language, so it will all be verified, that we cannot put the school board in there.
Okay. So I will look to the board for any comment. Ms. Smith?
Just a clarifying question. I want to make sure I'm squaring sort of, you know, what Ms. Butler-Washington is saying, what Mr. Schwartz has said, in terms of who has potential domain to appoint a member to this board in the event that there is a vacancy. I thought I heard you say that it's the governor, got that, check that box, but there's also a local level in which the commissioners could appoint a member to this board. So if that's currently a option, just thinking about if we were to move to charter, would the council then have that same authority to appoint a member to this board?
The commissioners do not have the option to appoint to this board.
Look into Mr. Schwartz.
Not in Charles County.
Not in Charles County, okay.
So around the state, there are various ways to fill vacancies. We have the authority to fill our own vacancy in Charles County. I believe Montgomery County has that same authority. Other counties, either the governor fills the vacancy, or the county executive fills the vacancy, or the county commissioners fill the vacancy. There may be ones where the county council does it as well. So those, just generally, either the county government in some form, or the governor fills the vacancy.
Thank you. So Ms. Butler-Washington, what I hear you saying is that there's no need for a letter from this body requesting that our business remain our business, because currently, the delegates aren't interested in creating any legislative path where the county executive or the charter council, whatever they're called, they would be, the council, would take that over. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Comment to what you just said.
Yes.
You said, there's no need because the legislation doesn't intend on submitting anything.
And we're discussing-
So that's this legislation. This is the only comment that I would make to that. Ms. Morley?
I was gonna say something similar, that you can't ever plan for the people that are currently in office. You always have to be looking ahead. And personally, if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. So to Ms. Butler-Washington's point, if she has something in writing right now, maybe that could be our starting point. But my preference is always going to be for us to have our own position in writing.
Ms. Kramer?
I was just gonna piggyback off of Ms. Morley, so I also hear what Ms. Butler-Washington is saying, but same, I would like to see something in writing. And I've seen some discussions that indicate that while the superintendent can't be pulled under the charter, that a vacancy could be filled by the council if it were to be written that way. So we just want to make sure a hundred and ten percent that that is not included. And I think it wouldn't hurt to just have our position known, even if that's, you know, not on the table, just to be clear. So no one says, well, you didn't tell us, or we didn't know, or we thought this would be okay, or anything like that. That's just my personal feelings about it. I would just like to see something in writing, and then I still don't think it's a bad idea that as a board, we take a position publicly, just to make that known, because I personally would want any responsibility of appointing a vacancy to remain with the Board of Education locally, so not with the county government or the state level. And that would be my personal opinion, so.
I would support that.
All right.
Yeah, I would support that as well.
Good. Are we good with that?
I just want to say one thing before we're good with it.
Sure.
I do, no, y'all know I'm on the board, right? So I have the board best interests at heart. So we went through this thing, and I think it was some misinformation came from a commissioner that got everybody bothered, but he was shot down, and it was wrong. I can assure you, we, this board, no one, it's against the law. And I'm gonna send you, when I get home, I'm gonna send you that law, so you can send it to everybody. It's against the law for the school board to be into a charter, because they have no jurisdiction over the education, none whatsoever. Prince George County legislators, they went before the body, and they voted against it. Our legislators are not interested in that, and I know you're saying that maybe fathers, but I don't think that no legislator will ever do that to their constituents, because we're elected officials. That's my only thing about it. So I am good, I receive your letters, I got you, I'm fine with it. I'm just saying that Charles County would never do it. Thank you.
Respectfully, never say never. Trust but they're fine.
Very, very good point. So for making a letter? Drafting, drafting, drafting a position, the support?
Yes, yes.
Good. One, two, okay. That works. All right, anything else? Not yet?
No, yes, okay.
You're good? You're good, no. Well, unless you're doing this next thing.
I'm not.
Okay. No.
Sound happy about that.
Yeah.
Like, I'm done with you guys.
Or not, okay. So next, we have a couple of action items. The first, we saw this at our last board meeting. It's a change to policy 5157.7. The search, elementary and secondary welfare, search of students. And so at the last meeting, we were provided this. The changes to the policies are in capital letters. It adds a couple of definitions, and it also adds the youth engagement advocate. So at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
A question.
Can you hold your question?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. Now, any discussion? Ms. Perkins?
So my only question is, as far as it goes with the parents, it says that they don't have to be, they don't have to approve of it, but if they want to be there, like if you were to call a parent and say, hey, we have reasonable reason to search your child, like, do they have the option if they want to be there or not? Or is it just, I'm gonna search your child, and I'm letting you know, but we don't need your approval?
So I'm gonna turn to superintendent for that.
Sure. So in the best possible scenario, we have to, at the end of the day, inform a parent if the search was done for their child. Depending on the situation, we may not be able to inform the parent before the search is done.
Okay.
We also, in some cases, may be able to inform the parent, and if the parent is able to come within a reasonable timeframe, we would be able to accommodate that, but we can't guarantee it in every single situation.
Okay. That was my only question.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Butler-Washington?
A youth engagement advocate. And a principal. Understand why the principal can do it. And a youth, you want these people to engage with the students. You want them to be able to believe in them, and at the same time, you want them, if they do something, you want these same group of people to search them. Do you think you're gonna get in the buy-ins from the students by doing that? My thing of it is, the youth engagement advocacy, how many hours do they get, you said, of training?
You're asking how many hours they receive in training, for what purpose? What kind of training?
For searching and doing this particular job they supposed to be doing?
Youth engagement advocates, as they were hired, went through an extensive training with Jason Stoddart's office. They also received search and seizure training, the exact same training that our principals, administrators receive. And that training was done with them earlier this school year, before the school year started, actually.
And so they, whatever they said, whatever they thought they could, if they think of something, and they want to search them, the reason of doubt, is what y'all call it, the reason of doubt, they can search the student.
Well, they can base their search on a reasonable belief that the student has something the student shouldn't have on them. It's the same authority that a teacher, that a principal or assistant principal has, and it's an authority that's stated in state statute.
And the SROs can't do this?
The SROs are sworn police officers, they have a different standard. They're not our employees.
And we don't want, when children are in our buildings, we are their legal guardian, and there are many times where we will proceed before we involve an SRO for many different reasons. Our procedures, and I wish, Ms. Butler-Washington, frankly, that you could have made the training that Eric did, because we also train when necessary when we do field trips. We have teachers in charge of field trips, and we have to train them in case there's a need to do a search when they're not in the building. And frankly, our definition, and I know that you and I disagree on this, and I understand your point very well, but the reality is, the relationship that you build with a young person, you know, it depends the strength of the relationship when you encounter difficult times with a young person. And our principals still have relationships with students many years later, even after they have had to impose discipline, and some of them are very serious discipline consequences for mistakes that young people make. And so I will always say that as much as possible, I'd rather our administrators, who are trained to look at this work differently, interject first, and then we can involve the police. But the police have a different set of rules, and that is a very important distinction as well.
But I still look at a security guard has that same thing, and this person has not even been trained to be a security guard. And you want them to be able to search the students, and what, they got high school diplomas?
The people that's been hired to do this?
No. So we have, we have a wider range of individuals. Some of them have been classroom teachers for many years. No, so we have, we have a wider range of individuals, some of them have been classroom teachers for many years. Some of them have longstanding careers outside of education and in education, so there's a wide variety of individuals that we carefully, and the principals chose a careful set of individuals because of their current relateness to students.
Ms. Perkins?
Wait, were you finished? Okay, coming from a student perspective, I believe that, like, it could honestly be beneficial, because there are teachers in the building that make connection with students. So if these student advocacy, if they make like an impact on the students, if they interact with them, and if they build relationships, it could be beneficial, because then it's like, okay, we trust you, we're more likely to tell you the truth, we're more likely to, you know, be more, what's the word I'm looking for, like compatible, or whatever, or like comply with what's going on, rather than it being like an administrator or somebody else, or even having to get an SRO involved, because that could intimidate students, because, you know, not all SROs are like friendly, or, you know, it could just be intimidating for some people. So I think if that connection is built, because there are teachers that have connections with students who aren't even their students, that we trust more than we would trust an SRO.
Thank you. Ms. Morley?
I'll reiterate my original point when we first discussed this. I completely understand why people would have concerns around this, because for many people, when you think search, you think criminal law, you think under arrest, you think police officer, that's not what this is intended to be. And looking at the job description, this is a portion of what the youth engagement advocate would do? Do I wish we didn't need this position? I do. I can't, just being very candid with you, I wish we weren't at this place. But we also have to address that there has been an increase, and there are ongoing issues in, in many of our schools. And hopefully, this person could be an intermediary to Ms. Perkins's point, because looking at the other things that they'd be doing, they're also gonna be helping with bus duty, they're gonna be helping with, you know, dismissals, they're gonna be working on mediations, they're, they're a liaison with the fire department and emergency personnel, you know, physical security assessments. Like, this is a small portion of what they would do, and it's more along the lines of, as I understand it, you can correct me, Mr. Schwartz, if, to the reasonable belief point, it's not, I'm going looking for something. I have to have a solid articulable, I mean, above a reasonable articulable suspicion for those in the law, but something, and we attended, several of us, your training, that, for the teachers, it's something that would almost be along the lines of what would stand up in court. It's not just, I don't like you, I'm targeting you, there has to be some real solid belief. Now with that said, if we do subsequently hear that this is not as working as intended, I would not have any problem with saying, well, we need to revisit this. So I just wanna go on the record as saying that as well.
Oh, good question.
Ms. Warren, and then Mr. Hancock, and then back to...
How many of these youth advocate, for me, it's the, the, to, to Ms. Vice Chair's point, I like the other side of this, I think the, the, you know, all the things that they're gonna do to help the kids, I guess, be more engaged in school. I think for me, it's just the title is misleading, the, the youth engagement advocate, that doesn't sound like searching and all that, even though that's a small portion of the position. My question is, how many, I know we probably talked about this already, but just to refresh my memory, how many youth advocate, or engagement advocates are gonna be in a school, per school?
We have seven, we started this year with seven, one in each high school.
Okay, and so, for instance, if there's an incident, how, like, I'm just trying to figure out, as far as building relationships, to your point, you're exactly right. They can't build relationships with all the kids, and, you know, I mean, that's a lot of students for, for one person to build relationships with. So at one, what point would that youth advocate, or youth engagement advocate be called in to, you know, I guess, search a kid, or whatever? Would it be a kid that they already formed a relationship with, or it's just, you know, I'm saying, when, when would they be tagged in to process?
So here's how schools run in, in that way, I think, you know, one, this is one position of many. The reality is that young people are gonna gravitate to certain adults, and we hope that every young person has an adult they gravitate to. The reality in schools, as you know, Ms. Warren, is that we don't get to play the good cop or bad cop. We have to have strong relationships, that even if you make a mistake, and it could be a bad mistake, we are still gonna be there to, to deal with the mistake, work you through it, and then have you come back successfully from it. That's when you know there's a relationship established. I think about our principals, like Principal Lou at Stedham, the relationship that he and his staff have to build with those students, so that they trust enough to say, this is for your best interest, let me guide you. This position was meant to be an additive adult in the school that would be working with the student services team of a high school, which includes the counselor, the PPW, the psychologist, the assistant principals, the principals, people who sit around the table and talk about, who have the teachers queued up to us that is not having an easy time, or something's not right, who do we need to talk to? Or who have, who do we need to engage, because we don't see them as engaged in school as, as they need to? It's not always just the kids who have a fight, and that we need to figure out what happened there, and follow it through. Because remember, when, when, when kids get into a fight, there's a whole follow-up that happens after the kids even come back, and the punishment, everything, and it's just following up and saying, hey, check in with Ms. Navarro after you get off the bus every day, to just do a quick check-in. That's what a lot of people do. So, the youth engagement position was meant to be an additional position to help the administration, to help the schools be able to add more people to connect with young people. We had to train them on a whole bunch of things that are important for them to know, because as you know, you walk into a school, you need to know your role, and who plays which role, and what other role. Our goal is that this individual is not just a, what traditionally has been a security person, but it's actually more than that, that it's a person that gets trained, and our hope is, and Dr. Jones mentioned this previously, that's somebody who gets, who gets trained on peer mediation through our student services department. And maybe it's one of the leads, there's a couple of leads, sometimes it's a teacher lead, the counseling department lead, and maybe the, the youth engagement advocates, advocate who will lead our peer mediation programs. We wanna have peer mediation at all of our secondary schools. Some of our schools have already started doing peer mediation programs, and so this would be yet another person who could lead that work. But at the same time, if there's an incident, and there's a, there is reasonable suspicion that a student has something that could affect the safety of themselves, or of the building, that that individual would also be able to handle that in what we call a school-level search. And so we wanted to give that tool, it's not a tool that they have to use often, but if they needed to use it in a specific consequence, especially when they're dealing with students who, you know, have made a mistake, potentially could make a mistake, that they're able to go through that process, hence why we trained them. And we requested the policy to include them, and the board just has to make a decision if this is a yay or a nay at this point, so that they would have that resource if they needed it.
Thank you.
Who did I say was next? Mr. Hancock?
Thank you, and I'll, I'll be brief. I actually spoke to a friend of mine who is a school resource officer at a school here in Air County, just to see what his thoughts were on this. He thinks it's a great idea. In his words, ideally, he wants to be in the school to protect the children and the staff of the school from people outside of the school. And he doesn't want to get into day-to-day altercations and disciplinary issues, because then those students constantly see him as the guy that's coming to be involved in every disciplinary issue. And obviously, that is a perfect world, where he would strictly be there to protect the students from the outside world. And there's a lot of crazies out there in the outside world. So he sees this as something that not only would help him in a process such as what we're talking about, but to maybe prevent that process from ever happening in the first place. So I know we're focused on giving the authority to do this, but I think there's more to this position than just that. And I think the goal would be to limit the amount of searches, and limit the amount of altercations, and limit the amount of times that we have to get a, get a school resource officer involved. I know this particular issue sticks out, because we have to give them the authority to do that, but it's just something, hopefully it's not used often, but if it needs to be used, you know, we have to, we have to keep our schools safe, and sometimes you, you just need a highly-trained individual that can, that can think quick enough to say, hey, I need to, we need to check you out and see what you have. But I just wanted to bring that up, I know we're focused solely on this issue, but I think the position is, is a good asset to our system.
Ms. Perkins?
Ms. Kramer, did you wanna go? Okay. I wanted to say two things. One, also realizing that, like, once those connections are built, that they have the, our best interests at heart. They're there for a purpose, they have our best interests, and no, it's not solely for searching, but that's a part of the job, but at the end of the day, it's to benefit us. And back to what Ms. Warren said, even, yeah, so no, they can't build relationships with all the students, but even if that means, like, there's teachers, or whatever, or even administrators, that just talk to students as they're going through the hallway, saying hi, you know, and kinda like, just having small conversations with them, and then those students tend to talk to them when they see them in the hallway, they tend to have conversations with them. So then it's like a kind of a relationship built. Now, it might not be close as if you're a teacher, and you know you have that student, and you develop a relationship with them over time, but it's still some type of relationship where you can trust that adult in order, so if it was in a situation where they needed to be searched, or something was going on, they would go to them. Or they would be okay with them doing it, rather than SRO, or an administrator that they may not like, or something as that nature of that person.
Ms. Kramer, then Ms. Smith?
So thank you, everyone, for your comments, and I, I do wanna say first that I, we've had a lot of extensive conversation about this since it came up the first time, I think this is probably our, like, third or fourth meeting, where we've discussed it. And I do just wanna acknowledge and say that I appreciate the added language that the superintendent has brought forward, because this is not the original policy that we looked at. And just appreciate, you know, her acknowledging some of the concerns, because like many of my colleagues, you know, I'm a parent of a child that currently attends school here in Charles County. And so, you know, this policy would affect my own child, like many of us. And so we do share concerns, you know, that some parents have expressed. And so just appreciate the superintendent for acknowledging that, and coming back with some added language to kind of help explain a little bit further about the reasonable belief definition, and adding the piece about parental notification when, when possible. But to Ms. Morley's point, I, I wish we weren't here either, but we are. And, you know, I think that if we can provide some added support to our students, and, you know, alleviate some of the pressure off of our administrators, I think if this role would do what it's designed to do, then that would be a positive thing for our schools. And I appreciate the student board member's perspective as a student, and I think that she made a very good point, that if they build these relationships, you know, the students will come to them. So they will say, hey, yeah, you don't have to search me, I'll tell you, I have this item, you know? Or they will confide in the youth engagement advocate, and I think that, not speaking for the superintendent, but I think that's how it comes across to me, as was the intent for the role. And I know, to Mr. Hancock's point, you know, everyone's zoning in on the search piece, but the reality is that this has been going on, you know, by administration, and of course, the teachers that were trained, which also, shout out to Mr. Schwartz, appreciate that training, because that was very informative for me to understand. And, and Mr. Schwartz made no, he meant no words, he said, if, if you don't think this will, hold up, it's not worth it, don't do it. You know, if you're questioning it, don't do it. So there, these, these individuals are not being trained, nor are the teachers, to go out and just search every student whenever you have some inkling. So just want the public to know that, that several of us did attend the training. So we saw the actual language, and, and, you know, received the same instruction that, that these youth engagement officers, or advocates, rather, and the teachers that are acting in, you know, on a field trip, I guess, instead of the principals that they receive. So that was really enlightening for me, and so I just appreciate the, you know, the discussion. I think it's important that we clarify these things, and that we provide clarification when there are questions or concerns. But just, you know, wanted to point those things out for the public.
Ms. Smith?
And I'll be super brief, which is not my natural setting, but I'll work to be brief. Definitely wanna echo exactly what my colleagues have already shared, especially that many of us do have kind of proverbial skin in the game. Many of us are parents. Many of us, our children will be directly impacted by this policy in the event that they fit into the criteria that's been established, if they do make some of these mistakes. So, you know, we are voting on policies that will immediately affect our very own children, should these things have happened to them, or they kind of fall into these circumstances. Just definitely wanna point out something the superintendent said, in terms of school systems being the de facto guardian for children that enter their buildings, from, in the event that your child is injured or hurt, and needing to get immediate medical attention, especially with the search and seizure. And definitely wanting to ensure that all children are safe, both mine, my kids' peers, every child in our school system. Also wanting to note that while we are, we have emerged from the pandemic, recognizing that many of our students lost a year and a half, almost two years of social engagement, that they're still working to get back. Our kids are more connected and global citizens at their very young age than we were when we were growing up. So they are watching war take place presently, they are watching things that are happening both in our nation, as well as across the world, and wanting to make sure that they have the proper mental health supports, to be able to deal with some of those things, if they're not getting supports at home. And so wanting to ensure that there are policies in place, that in the event that they do make a mistake, there are people there to help them, that are not law enforcement initially. So which is why I'm definitely in support of this, with the amended language. But just wanting to note that for the, the public, there are a variety of factors that we know are playing out in our high schools, but a very select few, but that are playing out, and just making sure they have the supports they need from an adult that's in a position to offer that support, that it's not the SRO.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Perkins?
Okay, two more things. One, back to what Ms. Kramer said, as in, I don't believe that, like, it's sad that we have to do this, and that we are here, but also what she said is, the support from them, and then also being able to confide in them, because I've seen it actually happen this year, like firsthand. We got a new administrator at our school, and, yeah, so like, when there's kids in the hallway, or whatever, she says something to them, like, okay, what are you guys doing in the hallway, whatever, but she's kinda like one of those cool administrators, that even though she's new, and she hasn't been there long, people confide in her, like, every day at lunch, there's the same couple of people, or whatever, that talk to her every day at lunch, you know, that she's, they're telling them, like, you know, what's going on, you know, and everything like that, so they have that, that trust. Every time, like, she sees them, you know, they speak, so they have that trust and that connection to where they feel safe around her, or okay with confiding in them, and then that's also what some students just need. Even if they don't have that relationship, you may speak to them sometimes in the hallway, and you might see them in the hallway, and they look down, and it's like, okay, like, you know, what's going on, you look down today, or whatever, and they will confide in you, because sometimes there's a deeper issue than what they're letting on, or what they're letting off. So sometimes they just need somebody to talk to, and that will listen, so they could get that deeper issue out, and then you could get to the root of what's really going on, or why they're acting the way that they're acting.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Warren?
Yes, I love hearing from the student's perspective, so that's, that's nice. What else are, were they trained on? You said the, the, the security, and, because you're speaking to your, what you just said, being able to identify, walking through the halls, and seeing that a kid is down, and being sensitive enough to that, and discerning enough to pick that up. Maybe you can't be trained to have discernment, but, you know, just that part of it, you know, are these, and I'm sure we talked about this already, but what else are they being trained on to, you know, be able to kinda identify red flags, or just, you know, some things that kids may be going through, or just, or not, you know?
Sure, so there are, and I don't remember all of them off the top of my head, but there were many, many hours of different trains that they received. One of them is training in de-escalation, which is a, a big one, because that's sort of what you're getting at, being able to recognize when students are having some, some troubles, that are leading them down the wrong path. There have been some trains with PBIS, and some of the, the tactics there, some of the restorative practices trainings that they've had, in addition to the, of course, the search and seizure training that they've had, and then other trainings that were done, not directly by Mr. Stoddart, but folks from the Maryland Center for Safety and Security came and did some training with them as well. So a number of hours, I might have to go back and tell you exactly what they are, but lots of different, different trainings.
Okay, yeah, just a nice little refresher there, thank you.
Ms. Morley?
If I could quickly, to Ms. Warren's point, is it the Maryland Center for School Safety, the SRO SSE training?
Yes.
Okay, I had it, crime prevention through environmental design. Crime prevention through environmental design, two hours. Crisis intervention, three hours. Data capture, one hour. Dangers of devices, two hours. Normative adolescent behaviors, three hours. School, Safe Schools Maryland, one hour. Understanding intellectual development, developmental disabilities, four hours. I'm getting tired. De-escalation training, four hours. Disability and diversity awareness, four hours. Implicit bias, four hours, which was expanded from two hours. Restorative approaches in schools, what, why, how, eight hours. So just to answer your question this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Morley.
No problem. I had that from earlier.
Any other discussion?
One thing, back to the de-escalating thing. I've also seen that happen too. So back to that specific administrator, there are two separate students that both confide in her, that both are kind of like, you know, close to her, that they talk to her, and they kind of have an issue with each other. But because she's cool with both of them, so they're both telling them their side of the story. So then she's de-escalating the situation without both of them being there. So then it doesn't go into something further. So not every situation will be like that. But just for an example of de-escalating, like she's making sure that, okay, well, don't do this. And, you know, talking to them so they don't escalate to something else.
All right. I mean, that's it. Okay. Healthy discussion. So we had a motion and a second, correct? It was Mr. Hancock? Ms. Smith, okay? So all those in favor of 5157.7 as presented here, please signify by raising your hand. It's Ms. Warren, Ms. Thomas, Ms. Smith, Ms. Kramer, Mr. Hancock, Ms. Morley, myself, and Ms. Perkins. All those opposed? Ms. Butler-Washington, thank you. Motion passes. Okay. Onto the next thing in the agenda, which we saw this at the last meeting as well. And thank you again for Ms. Kramer and for the staff in editing this. This is a proposed resolution for Native American, Alaska Native Heritage Month.
Motion to approve?
So made by Mr. Hancock, second. It will have Ms. Morley this time. Any discussion on this? All right? Yes. Ms. Kramer?
Yes, I'm going to discuss my own resolution, yes. No, I just, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I was just going to take this time. I just wanted to thank my colleagues for allowing me the opportunity to draft this resolution and to come before you for its consideration. I think adopting this resolution really goes a long way and is long overdue, in my opinion, in terms of acknowledging and recognizing the rich and diverse cultures that exist here in Charles County. And specifically, recognizing our indigenous populations demonstrates that the board in Charles County Public Schools values and appreciates the contributions of our native populations. So just wanted to thank you all for that.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Kramer. Yeah, Ms. Dr. Navarro?
So I just wanted to also make a comment. If it's okay from the board, if this resolution passes, it takes effect November 1st through November 30th. And I was wondering, because we will come together and meet again November 15th, and that will be 15 days in. If the board would allow us to, if it passes, to print it out, have it signed by both of us, and then ask Ms. Kramer to be able to recognize it to one of our staff members that will come and get it. And we could just do a picture to memorialize if it passes through before November 1st.
Oh, before November 1st?
Yes, if the board would be okay with having...
Okay. And we can certainly bring...
The board member that.
We could certainly still do it publicly in November as well.
You could.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm okay with whatever the chair decides and the board decides, so.
Okay. All right. So all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, that's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. All right. We have come to the end. Is there anything else the board needs to bring up or discuss? All right. Okay. Ms. Thomas, Ms. Thomas is seconded.
Didn't we say we're going to be talking afterwards?
I... Okay. I, I ask if there is anything to do. And I paused at great length. So... So would you, we can, how do we get rid of the motion on the floor? Mr. Schwartz? There was a second. Yeah, we can vote it down. Okay. So, yeah, this will be a first, right? So all, all, all those in favor of adjourning, please raise your hand. All right. So that is... Okay. So that is, did you put your hand up? Okay, Ms. Thomas. Okay. All, all those opposed? All those opposed? Okay. Okay. I'm, I'm just here.
Well, I move to go to close executive.
That's what we needed to hear. Okay. Mr. Schwartz, you want to come up? Just...
We need a motion for the board to meet an executive session as permitted by the Maryland, opening the exact section 3-305 and 3-103 of the General Provisions article to discuss administrative function matters specifically concerning an appointment by the board.
So moved.
Second.
It's made by Ms. Smith and seconded by Ms. Morley. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay. Ms. Thom, Ms. Thomas opposed? Okay. All right. Thanks. Now we need a motion?
No.
Do we know? We don't, we don't, we close session.
You have a motion to adjourn into executive session.
What's that?
I see you have a motion to adjourn into executive session. It's already passed.
All right. Thank you.